Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is Wednesday, September 19th, and this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. We'll begin the agenda with public participation. Is there anybody here who would like to address the committee?
Hi.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. Jen Drinkwater, you probably know me from last time. I just have one statement and a couple of questions. The first statement I want to make, and I just have notes down, is I just want to congratulate the students of the Wareham Wild Vikings for being selected as one of the recipients of the 2012 Braveheart Awards. I don't know if you guys were aware that they received an award this past weekend over at Wareham Crossing. I also want to recognize the students that participated in the JROTC. They did the colors. And then the students also at the elementary school who raised approximately $2,500 to donate to the Special Olympics through their penny drive. Ms. Miranda was there to donate those funds to the Special Olympics, and I just thought that was a really good, positive thing that our kids did. And I just wanted to call it some attention to it because I think it's a really good thing that they're doing.
Thank you, but we're aware of it for a number of sources, including the newspapers. Wareham Week is here and does a great job with that.
They do.
But it's always good to have it reiterated.
Yeah, so I think it's good to see the things that our kids are doing. Okay, so my next question is, I was looking for a little bit of clarification. On the 2013 budget presentation slide 23, I know there was some talk and there's been some stuff going around about the interventionalists and the role that they're going to play in the school system. And it looked like there was a budget request for $83,720 for new interventionalists with 2.0 full-time equivalent for both decas and mine-its. And I guess I'm curious because there's lots of information going around, what do they do, what don't they do? And so I guess I want to know, do they provide direct services to the students? Are they responsible for teacher evaluation? What's their role? What's their role and why? What benefit are the students going to get for that $168,000? I'm just kind of curious as to that information.
Okay.
You may or may not be able to answer it, so, at this time, but I'm interested in that. And lastly, one of the things that I'm interested in finding out is, at the last meeting or one of the last meetings, Ms. Miranda had suggested was looking for donations of books, nonfiction books. And in response to that, I'm in the process of, I just registered for a nonprofit organization. I've started a nonprofit organization called Project Bells, stands for Books to Enhance Lifelong Learning for Students. I have a website, I'm registered with the state, I'm in the process of earning a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt status. I'm building a board. I have some big hitters that are agreeing to be part of my board. And we're looking to not only raise money, we've received some donations, but also to do a book drive. So I guess my question for the board and the school is, what specific books do you need? Are there specific titles? Is there a specific level? What are you in need for? Because we're here. We have a group of people that are ready to go and to start, you know, making this a reality.
Great. I would appreciate it if you would direct both those questions to the lady behind you in an email.
Okay.
She could give you a great answer.
Great. Hi, Jen.
Or perhaps you could even do it tonight.
Yeah, that would be great.
As she chooses.
Mm-hmm.
If you choose to put it in writing, I would appreciate it if you would copy Dr. Rabinovich and myself.
Excellent.
So we can make sure there's back and forth and that your questions are satisfied.
Great, thank you.
And I wish you great luck with your fundraising.
It's going to be, it's going to be good. Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the committee? Seeing none, I'll move to good news. Dr. Rabinovich?
Yes. Recently, I believe it was the first week of school, I received a call from a gentleman by the name of Mark Manella of Manella Motivational Seminars. Mr. Manella conducted a seminar at Wareham High School for our grade nine students on September 7th and could not express enough about the outstanding behavior of the students and staff for the one and a half hour presentation. Principal Palladino set the tone for the meeting, and this motivational speaker said that he goes across the state and how happy he was with the behavior of Wareham Public Schools' students in grade nine. So I thought that was good news. And just for clarification, the Braveheart, the $2,500 was raised from all of the students. Collections were taken at the elementary schools, middle school, and high school. But yes, that is great that that was donated to a charity in behalf of the Wareham Public School students.
Any other good news? Yes. Ken, we got company first. Oh, Cindy, welcome.
Before I go, Mr. Chair, I'll let you introduce.
That's okay. I'd like everybody to meet Cindy Pham. Cindy is our student representative to the school committee and will be with us for the remainder of the year. Welcome, Cindy. The only thing you don't get to do is vote, but you get to ask any questions, and we'll try to make sure you get good answers. And we always appreciate hearing from you in whatever form, either a question or a comment. Go ahead, Ken.
And don't be intimidated sitting next to Dr. Sylvia because he gets loud, so just... Couple of things. First, I think Jen Drinkwater stole my thunder. Well, in the, I think you mentioned congratulations to the Wareham students for sportsmanship? Yes, so I just want to echo that because being a sports official, when I'm out there, I hear a lot of negativity about Wareham. So it's good to see something positive come out. At our next basketball officials' meeting, I will post this all over so they know that we do have good sportsmen. The other thing is, I got a call from Butch Gregory. I already spoke to the superintendent about this. And Mr. Gregory called looking for direction. He wants to do a collection, a fundraiser for the Pittsburgh football player that broke his neck. And he wants to take up a collection at home games and reach out to all of the teams in the South Coast Conference to do the same thing. It would be a powerful message. So Dr. Rabinovich is going to look into it and get back to him as to how to go about that. But I would say kudos for Butch for taking the lead on something like that because I don't know the condition of the athlete as of today, but I think it's a nice gesture. And I said that for good news. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else? Good news? Yes?
I just, last week, there was parent-teacher introduction meetings. And I know that they went on a mine- it, I don't know if they went on the other elementary school, but I just wanted to say what, how organized it was, how great it was to be able to have parents go in, meet the parent, meet the teachers right from the very beginning, be able to express some concerns, know exactly what is going on in the classroom, what's expected. It was just, it was a great opportunity for the parents to get introduction right in the very beginning of the year and then know exactly what the expectation of the teacher is when it comes to their children. So I just wanted to say kudos to that program and how it was run.
Anything else? I, go ahead, Mike.
I'd just echo what Rhonda said. I did attend the decas one, and it was very, very well organized. And it was great to meet the teachers and get answers to your questions.
I was one of many enthusiastic participants in the Dick Maloney Youth Foundation Bike Ride over the weekend. It raises lots of money, unlike some organizations, national organizations, 100% of the money they raise goes right back into the community. It's like so many other really good programs that exist in the community. And it's focused on youth, and it's fun, and it's healthy, and it was a fantastic day for it as well.
Just to add to that, we attended the family fun ride right after that. And also another great event, unfortunately, there were only around 25 kids that participated, but it was a great opportunity to get kids to fundraise for their school. I think that they're thinking about maybe changing it to the spring so we have a longer time to be able to promote it in the school system. But it's a great, healthy activity for our kids to get involved in, a way to raise money for their schools. And also thanks to the Bentley soccer team that came out once again to cheer on the kids as they went down the path.
Great. Okay, let's move on to the minutes of September 5th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Mike?
I don't have it in front of me at the moment, but I did see where it mentioned the capital planning article.
Yes.
And it gave a lump sum figure. I think we should break that out to be what was intended for schools. It looks like where the whole thing is for the schools.
Well, later in the minutes, if I remember correctly, the entire article was broken down.
Yeah.
So I think that's probably good enough unless people feel...
Okay.
Okay? Anybody else feel?
Well, the first part of page two was the single article, and then the, just beyond that, it was the, all of the numbers from the capital planning committee. So it was listed two different ways in the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstain? 5-0-0. Next will be the school committee reports. I guess they all sort of fall into my area. Under the action committee, a little over a week ago, the action committee met. We came away with two action items. The first action item was that the interim town administrator will be working with the transportation manager and our superintendent to develop an RFP to see if it still makes sense for us to be a, providing this through the town as compared to privatizing it. After that meeting, I actually had a meeting of the collaborative, and some of the numbers that are coming out of the private companies are getting more and more competitive. So it is going to be interesting to see. And of course, we want to make sure whatever decision we make is transparent and the citizens feel comfortable that we're doing it as cost-effective as possible. So that was one action item. The second action item, and this was thanks to Selectman Begley, that there is a company out of Maine that has made a, has increased their business by going from just refurbishing military vehicles and equipment to school buses. And so we are going to be exploring the possibility of having some of our older buses refurbished. And this is not just slapping on a coat of paint. This literally is a serious refurbishment that separates the body from the chassis and really does an outstanding job. We don't know yet whether it's applicable to our situation. The first step is something called a joint visual inspection, which basically means we get together with this company, they look at the buses, and they figure out whether they can actually meet our needs because each bus, the refurbishment of each bus is approximately $30,000 and more, depending on what they discover during the process. So it's potentially very exciting and perhaps a very cost-effective way of reducing the capital associated with replacing our fleet. By the way, the reason it occurred in Maine, which is really not that far away, is because they have a policy in Maine that says after 10 years or 125,000 miles, buses have to be taken off the road. So it becomes particularly expensive for Maine school districts if they have very good engines and terrible bodies. So this is an attempt to solve that problem in Maine based on the law. We don't have the same law, but we have the same budget problems, and we're hopeful that this is a way to save money. Any questions on the action committee action items? We'll be meeting again in three weeks from the date of that meeting, which I believe, was that Monday or Tuesday? I think we're meeting October 2nd?
Tuesday, the 2nd.
Tuesday, the 2nd. So if anybody wants to attend, I know, Mike, you didn't get notification of the last one, but we'll be meeting again on October 2nd and hopefully have some news on those two action items.
You didn't send notification to the group, did you?
I know a meeting date and agenda was posted. I'm not, and it was certainly sent internally to the members of the action committee, but we may have missed sending it out to the school committee, and if we did, I apologize.
Thank you, yeah.
Just one question?
Yes.
So the inspection, when they come out and they see if our buses are right for this program, will that cost us anything?
My impression is no, but I'm not in charge of the subcommittee that's exploring this. I think it's beneficial to both because they don't want to do a scope of work and then discover they're not going to be successful. And it is also intended for buses, in reading the material that was sent to me by Selectman Begley, it's clear that it's intended for buses that are approaching that 10-year period. And we have a lot of buses that are older than that 10-year period. Whether they're too far gone or not too far gone remains to be seen. So, but the bottom line is, it's an initiative that makes a tremendous amount of sense, and we hope it'll be successful. Budget policy discussions, following up on the discussion of two weeks ago. First of all, I was in there, we do not need to have the policy review committee come up with a policy related to this. In reviewing the budget policy that already exists, it already addresses, in general terms, what's necessary in terms of the scope of the school, the scope of the school committee's responsibility versus the superintendent, et cetera. But there are two issues that the budget advisory committee of the superintendent is going to be addressing. One is a clear definition of major categories because that's not clearly defined within the budget policy. Mike has some strong feelings about that and is doing his own research as, in terms of what delineation is appropriate given, within the law. And so that's one issue. Assuming that does not need to be changed, then there's about, I don't know, eight or nine or 10 clearly defined major categories that we've been using. And then we just need to make sure that when we move money between those categories, then it comes before the school committee for our approval. The second issue is more difficult. And I'm not asking for discussion on this issue because the advisory committee will be reporting back to us. But the second reason it's more difficult is, as the year progresses, things happen beyond the ability of this committee or the superintendent and his team to predict. The result is that the end of the year frequently results in budget allocations that are significantly different than what was intended by the original budget. How you deal with that and also recognize that things happen and management needs to respond to it is not clear. So I think that's enough said on that subject because Ken and Mike will be joining Barry to talk about that and come back with their recommendations, unless, Mike, because you were a part of this initial meeting on this, you want to add anything to that?
No, we can get back. I mean, we hammered out a lot that day.
Right.
So, and I think we have some good direction.
Good, okay. And then finally, we have been requested on the same evening as the next meeting of the Transportation Action Committee to come before the Board of Selectmen to talk about the warrant articles that will be on town meeting warrant at the end of October. The date of the request is October 2nd, 7:00 PM. The reason I'm bringing it up is because if enough of the members of the committee plan to be there, we'll post it as a meeting. And I'm not in any way discouraging anybody from attending. The more, the better. Does anybody know now whether they'll be able to and would like to attend that meeting?
Well, I'm working now, and I, you know, I'm in and out of Boston all the time, so I don't know if I'll be able to attend. But I don't know why we have to meet with them. What's the purpose?
The purpose is to answer any questions they might have about our requests.
We've got one request on you.
Well, no, we have multiple requests.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Okay, I just thought we had one.
No, we have multiple requests. One relates to the roof.
Chapter 70.
The gymnasium roof.
Oh, yes, yeah, right. We have three requests.
Three requests, exactly.
If I can, I'll be there.
Okay, and the reason is because they are expected to take a position on them, and they'd like our input before they take a position.
Well, I mean...
Mike, do you expect to be able to attend?
Yeah, I plan to.
Rhonda?
Yes.
I will, so, there's three, so please post it, Michelle. And anybody who can be there?
I'll try, I'll try, but I can't guarantee.
Okay, well, we know we'll have at least three, so that's fine. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, my cynical nature's coming up here. Why do we have to discuss, these are all cut and dry articles? I mean, it's been posted, it's been put in the paper. Why is it that we have to appear before them to talk about three things that are cut and dry? I just don't understand it.
I think...
It just seems like we keep going before them and, you know, going before them to, I don't know, hat in hand? It just bothers me. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, it bothers me.
I don't think candidly, or to use your term, your cynicism is appropriate. I think any time we...
I hope I'm wrong.
Anytime we ask for money to be appropriated, that is at the moment unallocated, I think it's reasonable for us to help the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen take a position on the money.
But we've met with the finance committee.
Well, we met with the finance committee, and they clarified it, classified it as a premature meeting. So we may, in fact, be going back to the finance committee.
Sorry I brought it up.
Anything else? Yes, Mike?
I'd just like to reiterate that it is perfectly appropriate for any proponent of any article to show up and, you know, make their case.
So what, the Board of Selectmen? They don't run this organization.
No, they don't, but they do, they do give a position on the articles.
They haven't taken a position on the other cards we sponsored.
Yes, they have.
No, they haven't. They didn't take a position on the, we're all for rights.
With due respect to both of you, I'm not sure this is a productive use of our time, so let's just plan to be there and make our case and move on. I think that's it for school committee reports. Have any other committees met that they would like to make a report on? Okay. Dr. Rabinovich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask, first of all, Mrs. Rotella to come for the first bullet article. At our last school committee meeting, someone came before us during public participation and asked some questions. They were kind enough to send it to me in an email. Mrs. Rotella has put together the response, as we were asked to do by the school committee. And so the following presentation will be in response to the questions asked.
Great.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jen.
Thank you. Dr. Rabinovich asked me to come and share, and I wasn't here at the last school committee meeting, so I will go ahead with the presentation as I read it from the minutes and as he and I discussed, and then answer any questions that you might have. This, compared to the later presentation, is very short. One of the questions was...
Excuse me, Jen.
Jen, I'm sorry, just to, before you begin, the original questions that were posed in an email to you were, was the response given to Ms. Drinkwater, or is this the response?
This is the response.
This is the response.
Okay. One of the questions was, when standards change, why does that affect curriculum? And so this is what Dr. Rabinovich has asked me to do, is to talk about when standards change, what happens? What's the what, the when, and the how of curriculum as a result of standards changing? We've had some very significant changes in our standards in the 2011 Massachusetts curriculum frameworks that incorporate the Common Core State Standards, which are also adopted by 48 other states and the District of Columbia. The process by which these standards were adopted is that in 2010, the Commissioners of Education in 48 states plus the District of Columbia adopted the national standards. In 2011, Commonwealth of Massachusetts adopts the curriculum framework, including those Common Core State Standards. It was published in March of 2011 and distributed through a series of meetings, training sessions with curriculum directors. We had actually begun looking at this in this district with our instructional leadership team. We, I met with them, we divided it up, went through the draft in the Common Core State Standards, and then went through the Massachusetts Frameworks a year later. And much of this information you've already had from my presentation on July 11th. School districts then were given three years for study and implementation, with full implementation including benchmarks in all grades and subjects by 2013, '14. What the Mass Curriculum Framework and Common Core Standards include are very specific skills and concepts that students need to know and be able to do. The standards outline by grade level when students need to know these skills and when they need to be able to demonstrate both the specific skills and concepts. These standards, for the first time, also talk about how students need to demonstrate their knowledge and ability to do specific skills. So while the standards aren't everything and they are just a framework, they do outline the expectations for all students, and they outline the expectations for which our students will be assessed. The major shifts that resulted in these new standards, specifically in ELA and literacy. For example, in kindergarten, the expectation is from 20 now to 44 high-frequency words. These are sight words that can't be directly correlated with a visual, and there are 44 high-frequency words that kindergartners are expected to learn, read, and write by the end of K. There is now a balanced literacy approach, and this was referred to by the speaker during public participation. And as Ms. Drinkwater stated, we need informational text because now through this balanced literacy requirement, we have to have a 50/50 balance between narrative fiction and nonfiction or informational text. And that informational text has to include far more than biographies. These would be science texts, history texts, current events, et cetera. In middle school, it moves to a 60/40 ratio with 60% informational, and in high school, 70/30. And this is reflective of the 21st century skills and to prepare our students for the world in which they're entering. Additionally, in the ELA and literacy standards, there are increased lexiles. These are the reading competencies. So that in all elementary and middle grades, the text complexity and the level at which students are expected to read is one half to one full year above the previous standards. By grade five, it's one full year. The text complexity includes density, syntax, vocabulary, and context or background knowledge. So through close reading skills, which is a specific strategy for reading, dissecting, discussing text, students are expected to have an increased reliance on academic talk, as the standards refer to it. It is basically rhetoric or discussion-based learning. The standards have also switched the strategy to more of an inquiry approach to learning, and this is true also in the next-generation science standards that will be coming out this winter. In mathematics, major shifts have been an adjustment in grade-level expectations. For example, fractions are now taught, are introduced and then expected to be mastered at a lower grade level. Increased content standards has specifically hit middle and high school most intensely. Grade eight integrated algebra, which actually includes both geometry and the first half of Algebra I. Geometry expectations that were all in grade 10 geometry are now introduced and some mastered between grades six and eight. In high school mathematics, the increased standard expectations are in all of the mathematic courses. For example, Algebra II is now, under the new standards, the second half of what was Algebra II plus all of trigonometry. So that is the impact that it has had on what we have for curriculum, for textbooks, and for materials. And why we have spent the last year not only providing professional development in the new framework and standards, but also developing district curriculum maps, K through eight. We put off the 9 through 12 maps because of NIASC, and the high school faculty felt they had enough on their plates. So the district... So the district maps in K through eight are complete in literacy and math. We have not been able to finish the ones in science because the new standards have not been published. Uh, the district maps for nine-twelve are in process with partial completion this summer, and they will be finished this fall. We also went through the texts and materials that we had on hand uh, to see what we could use, if it could be moved down a grade level, moved this way, that way, and what we had. So we are currently using what we have on hand and seeking to fill the gaps. We had purchased mathematics texts that would be aligned, uh, in K five in twenty-ten using the draft, and those texts have been updated and through our purchase of online access, we've been able to get the updates. In grades six through eight, we purchased new mathematic books, also both hard text and online access in twenty-eleven. We have teachers' vertical teams in literacy, math, and science to continue the work and study, and we have been able to this summer, as you know, through the use of an endowment fund and grants, purchase some teachers' materials and some new student reading books. Specifically in the literacy standards, uh, we had a volunteer who went through the entire library in Hammond and pulled out all of the informational books and sorted them by grade level, and they have been distributed to mine at Deccas. They're primarily the lower grades, um, but all of those books have been redistributed to grades where they can be used. Uh, some of the things that we, we need to do is, obviously, we need to complete the nine-twelve curriculum maps and all of the benchmark assessments. Everything is done through first semester, but at nine-twelve, we're still working on second semester. Uh, we need to look for additional reading texts for informational reading at all grade levels. Most needed is upper elementary and middle. Uh, we have some at the middle school, upper elementary is in need, and exemplars and recommended texts are in the framework. The, I, we have also got to look at some supplemental as well as aligned high school math books. Quite honestly, there are no aligned high school math books on the market yet. There's a lot that have changed the cover, but not necessarily changed the pages. So we are seeking, uh, online materials, free materials, and supplemental materials, and participating in a committee with the State Department of Education assessing other math materials. We are continuing to train our teachers in the new standards, strategies, and expectations. This is a huge shift for some of our teachers. It means teachers are moving aside, and, uh, as I'm sure Dr. Sylvia has said in some of his, uh, work, that this teacher is no longer the sage on the stage. They're the coach, they're facilitator. So they need to provide opportunities for students to learn and coach them in that learning. And students need to learn to discuss, to learn through discourse, through modeling, and through presentation. One of the big things this fall is that I will be visiting the schools during their PTA meetings and some of the coffees that the principals host to meet with families and talk about these new expectations and standards. Our teachers are adopting a lot of innovative strategies. We have a middle school teacher and a high school teacher who are piloting what is called a flipped classroom. What that means is that students are provided the resources and readings, uh, and online URLs that they can seek and read at night and study. They bring their questions to class, and then the teacher break, facilitates and coaches them through learning what they have read. So rather than using the class for dispensing all of the knowledge, the students are gaining knowledge through their own reading and then actually being able to apply that knowledge through classroom work. In what's coming, in the spring of twenty-fourteen, or about eighteen months from now, we will have the National Park assessments that will replace MCAS. These assessments will all be online. They will include local, state, and national assessments. The information on these tests changes quickly, and it seems to be in flux at the moment. Uh, I am on a number of listservs and stay in touch with our State Committee people, uh, and we, in fact, I will be going to a meeting on October tenth to learn more about some of these model assessments. But all of it will be, be based on the Common Core standards. Here are some references relating to the frameworks, to the Park assessments, uh, and to some of the changes in the new literacy that is required.
All set?
All set.
Any questions on the committee? Would you make sure you send a copy of that to Ms. Drinkwater?
I have a copy for her tonight.
Okay.
I'm gonna put it on the website.
Excuse me?
We'll put it on the website.
Put it on the website as well. Am, am I to understand that every student in the nation is gonna be taking the same test?
Yes. Portions of the test will be locally developed, portions of the test will be developed by states, and a portion of the test will be common across the nation, all based on the Common Core standards.
Yes. I, I just wanna make the distinction. The standards will be the same. The assessments, though, are gonna be made up by two separate organizations.
Oh.
One is Park, which has twenty states.
It fluctuates nineteen, twenty-one, somewhere in there.
And then there is another conglomeration of states making their own assessment, basically in the south of the country. And so there'll be at least two, and as Jan showed, we still have a couple of states that have not joined. So the, it isn't the same assessment. In nineteen states, it will be the same assessment.
The east and west coast assessment, most of the east and west coast states belong to Park. There is a group of states from the southwest and scattering other parts of the country that belong to smarter test.
Almost sounds red-blue to me.
Exactly.
Okay, so one set of standards, two, two different assessments.
Possibly they're also talking to each other, so at this point, what we do know is that there will be a national assessment that at least nineteen states will take, that Massachusetts will participate in, called Park.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was a little confused of the reason why we were doing a presentation based on a question that was brought up at public particip- participation. I mean, I was happy to be able to get the updates from the Common Core. Um, would you inter-
Can I answer that question?
Yeah.
Because, um, Mr. Fonce asked at the last school committee meeting for it to be put on the agenda.
And I remember that it was, it was more, we would like to know the response to the questions that came up in this, but we, I might have heard differently.
That's my, I'll, okay.
Okay, no problem. So I just didn't know if you wanted to entertain any, since it was part of public participation, to see if this did answer Ms. Drinkwater's questions, um, since it was about that, or do you want it to just continue through email from here? Cause I, that's what I thought Kenny was looking for.
I'm hoping that between Ms. Drinkwater and Ms. Rotella, they can answer any questions they might have, and if anything's particularly germane, I'm sure one or both of them will come back to the committee, but that's the way I'd like-
I'd be happy to do that.
That's the way I'd like to do it from this point on, for time reasons, if nothing else.
Okay.
Okay, um, West Wareham Academy alarm system.
Okay, um, I don't know if it was during Anna's presentation, but it was mentioned that during the, um, weather that we had, with all the rain and so forth, we actually had a lightning strike, um, at West Wareham, which fried our, um, control panel for the fire alarm system. And, um, our alarm company came out, they have, uh, replaced it. Um, actually, it was a lot cheaper than we thought it would be, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. And part of that is because we had done, we had to update it a year ago, and they did it in components. So there was actually some sort of a failsafe so that when it hits one part, it somehow, the circuits stop so it doesn't get, uh, there's something that absorbs the electricity. I don't know the technical language, but it didn't take out the rest of it in the wiring, just one part of the box, which we were able to replace.
Sounds like good news to me.
Yes. All right, would you like me to continue?
Please.
Okay. Uh, report on the school lunch procedures, and ladies, I apologize because you didn't know I was going to ask you to do this, but if you don't mind coming down, please, and having a seat, um, by that microphone, I'm gonna read what you have, um, written to me, and then, um, if there's any clarifications that you would like to give, um, or any questions that the committee would like to ask, since you are the folks that implement this procedure, um, I thought that would be nice to have you here, so thank you for coming.
We sincerely appreciate your being here, and don't feel like you're under the gun. We just appreciate the fact that you're the people who have to make it work, so we enjoy hearing from you if you have anything you'd like to add.
So, um, we have Elizabeth Youngson from Deccas Elementary School. Elizabeth is there at the microphone. Um, we have Jean Smith, who's also at the microphone, and taking a backseat, I see, is Eileen Haley from the Minut Forest Cafeteria and Mary Kluba from the Middle School Cafeteria. Um, and I can't say enough about the work that these ladies do. Um, it is a fairly large job to feed, and each one of the buildings, we're talking between six hundred and seven hundred children. Um, breakfast, lunch, um, sometimes snacks as well, um, snacks for tests, and, um, they're even talking, um, in our evening thing, we may be discussing dinner, but, um, we're, we're not there yet. Jean is looking around, who is she? Cause he talked to you about, okay, sorry. Um, so, I have, um, to do a little bit of an investigation after the last school committee meeting. I met, um, first with Jean, um, then every Friday, the managers have a cafeteria managers' meeting. I went to their meeting, we talked about the issue, and I asked them to put in writing what their procedure is at their individual school so that you could hear it firsthand.
Could you refresh people's memory as to what precipitated this?
Yes, um, I believe Mr. Fonce received a phone call from an angry parent about, um, food being taken away from a child. I believe that was basically it.
Well, I, I, I got a couple of calls that the parents said the children were in line, and when their account was checked, they didn't have sufficient funds, so the food was taken back, which I, I could only go by what the parents say, and so I want clarification, because if that's what we're doing, then we need to re, you know, take a look at that, because I, I can't believe that, that would be happening.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna start off with, uh, Eileen Haley, um, from Minut Forest. Um, once everybody is in, or, at the elementary schools, kindergarten starts about a week after the, the rest of the students. So after that happens, um, so after two lunches are owed, they will not allow a child to charge breakfast. What they do at Minut Forest is whichever muffin they actually cook themselves, not one that gets bought, but one that they actually prepare themselves, they give the child a muffin and a milk only. Um, and on each occurrence of this, when a child has owed a lunch, they are told that they need to bring money the next day, on each occurrence, the same thing at breakfast, and contact is made with the parents. They try to contact the parent, get the, uh, school administration involved and so forth. Um, lunch, if over two lunches are owed, um, the child cannot, um, choose which lunch to have, but they're given a, um, sunflower butter sandwich and milk only, and part of that has to do with peanut allergies. Some children have an allergy to peanuts, so instead of peanut butter, it becomes sun butter, um, and milk. Um, so that is Minut. At Deccas, children at Deccas are allowed to charge two lunches. If they owe, they get a peanut butter sandwich and milk. Um, at breakfast, if they owe, they get some graham crackers and milk. Um, letters are sent every week or sooner to all children that owe, uh, our calls are made to parents, um, if there is no response from the letters. Um, middle school, um-
If there's no response from the letters, what happens?
If there's no response from the letter, then they make calls, they call home. The, um, middle school, the policy in the handbook says that students are allowed to charge only one lunch, but in actuality, they allow the child to charge two lunches. Um, they are told on both these days that they will not be able to charge on the third day. If they come with, with two days of charges on the account, we tell them we can no longer let them charge lunch, but give them a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and a milk, um, so that they do not go hungry. Um, breakfast is not addressed in the policy that was originally written in that particular handbook. Um, and the, the basic procedure is that breakfast cannot be charged, however, on a case-by-case basis, if, um, they feel that the child is hungry, they will provide some food. And at the high school-
I'm confused.
Okay.
Sorry. On a case-by-case basis, if they feel the child is hungry, they provide some food. That sounds really loose. Is that really what you meant to say?
I mean that they make a judgment on a case. In other words, they don't just say no, even though the policy says you can't charge a breakfast.
But in all cases, some food is available?
Yes.
Irrespective of whether they think the child is hungry or not?
Um, I'll have to have them answer that question for you.
Okay, finish.
At the high school, uh, students are allowed to charge the price of two lunches, so that is consistent across the board. After, um, student has charged twice, student is offered a sun butter sandwich with milk. Um, new this year, students are not allowed to charge breakfast. At this, as this is a new policy, this has not been strictly enforced and is evaluated on a case-by-case uh, basis by the, at the manager's discretion. Now, um, something that you won't get by hearing what they've written here, and I have some knowledge of it sitting through meetings um, with the cafeteria managers for four years as the assistant superintendent, um, is that I believe Minut Forest, um, ran a debt of close to a thousand dollars, over a thousand dollars, uh, for unpaid, um, which they're not allowed, when somebody doesn't pay for a lunch, and if they haven't filled out the paperwork for free and reduced lunch, they're not allowed to ask for reimbursement from the federal government for that, um, and it then becomes part of the overall cost of running the program. Um, the managers have been given this particular year, um, nutritional standards um, that are above where we were before, across the state, as far as fresh fruits and vegetables, which will increase the cost. At the same time, we are very careful at rising, um, our prices at a pace that doesn't outpace our population, and so, um, we had the conversation about it. Um, they, um, feel that they need to try to contain the costs so that they can offer it for everyone, um, and that they can't just have a blanket. And, and part of the problem that goes to Kenny's issue is, even if we've told a child twice that they owe and that they're not gonna be able to get a lunch, my understanding, and, and when I spoke to Jean, it was only, that Wed- that Wednesday was the second day of school, so I don't believe that this happened this year because they can all charge two lunches. So it was the second day of school, they hadn't taken it away from anybody. But last year, after telling a child twice that you have a balance, you have to pay it before I can, before you have, you know, free choice of whatever you want- you have to pay it before I can, before you have, you know, free choice of whatever you want, more than one child would come with a tray full of food. And the manager would be in the position of saying, "I'm sorry, you can't have that. You have to have the sun butter sandwich or peanut butter sandwich," whatever the case would be. And so, you know, at this point, you know, I'd like, if I have misstated anything, I'd like the ladies to clarify it for us. And then the committee to ask myself or the ladies questions.
Fine.
Jean?
Anything you'd like to add to what Dr. Avinevich has said?
Well, the first thing that comes to my mind is that I would like to make it crystal clear that none of us are in this business to take food away from children. We are employed to furnish a healthy meal, where HEM has a very high percentage of free and reduced, which makes us a severe need community. And we are all very well aware that every child that comes through the line needs to eat. That being said, we are also in a business. There are policies in place for people who are financially in a bad place to apply for subsidized meals. I know that a lot of Eileen's debt at the elementary level, the kids that run up the debt, nobody's applied for assistance. So, I mean, it's got to stop somewhere. Unfortunately, the point of sale is the place where we have to make a determination. Are we going to continue to, you know, run up, in some cases, hundreds of dollars? Individual students owe hundreds of dollars. And again, we're not in the business to take food away from children, but we are responsible for staying self-supporting so that we don't have to take textbooks out of children's hands, which would be the case if we were to come to the school committee and say, "We're not making our budget and we need some help." Does anybody wanna add anything?
They keep saying Minnit Forest. That's my school, yes.
Could you, could you use the microphone?
Just so that the TV camera can hear you.
Thank, thank you very much.
I just wanna let you know that I did have one family that owed, or one child owed me over $300 worth of meals last year and then left the system. So I never got that $300. And the child ate full lunches last year, not just peanut butter sandwich. She ate whatever she wanted last year. So this year is a new system. We are all trying to be the same across the board and treat all the children the same way. And that's why we've come up with this policy. Two lunches charged and then they get a peanut butter sandwich. It also came to our attention this year that those meals that we are giving those children and charging them for, we are not allowed to get the reimbursement from the government. If we aren't getting paid from these people, we shouldn't be getting the reimbursement from it. And so that's why we have changed the policy, so that we aren't even charging these children for their peanut butter sandwich and milk. They are just getting the meal. You know, getting the, it's not a meal. They're getting something to eat. We can't have that debt.
If I can, in a way to try to get more people, we're up to, over 50% of our students are on free or reduced lunch now. And we did a mailing, I believe, to every family. Families can now fill out the form, one form, enlist all their family members so that they don't have to, it used to be, if you had five children, you filled out five forms and had to repeat all the information. So we've really tried to simplify the process.
They can do it online also.
And if, you know, if there's, if something is taken away from some of this, is if there is anyone who, for whatever reason, has not qualified for free or reduced lunch and has some financial issues that have just occurred, please either call me or go to the building principal, who will then go and share with the cafeteria manager. You know, we do try to do that. We understand that things change. It isn't, you know, we passed it out in September. All of a sudden, somebody loses their job October 1st. Now things have changed. So we wanna make it easier for people. I understand sometimes it's difficult for families to share private information about their financial things. But they have to, like they said, we get audited yearly and they look for those forms. If we don't have a form and we gave somebody a free lunch, then we're on the dime for it. And one of the reasons why we have been able to be in a position so that when Minnit Forest, and again, I'm sorry, I keep using your name. A piece of equipment that cost $25,000 broke. And we had to put in $25,000 worth of wiring, because of the old wiring in the building, so we could put the new machine in. The cafeteria paid for that. It doesn't come out of the school department's budget. They are really self, everything goes back into that program. We have a huge project we're gonna have to do at Deccos to replace the walk-in freezer. I don't know exactly how much money. But again, we're not coming to anybody to ask for those funds. It will come right out of the food service. And we've been in positions before, when I started with the ladies, where it was nip and tuck whether we were gonna make ends meet and be able to pay the medical insurance. And we even looked at privatizing. But they have made a run at this and made this so that we have food available. And that's when I went on and I looked for particular things from the Department of Education that actually talked about this. They were silent on the whole issue of people that come without money. I could not find anything. But a lot about what you need to have available to people, about the nutritional quality and so forth. And it is a difficult thing. I even said to the ladies, you know, we will talk further. I mentioned it to the foundation, that perhaps I go to them and say, "We have a debt of $1,000 for the food service department for people that haven't been able to, like with Angel Fund, that pays for glasses for kids, that maybe, you know, some sort of a charitable thing like that to pay the difference." Or like we do with WAA for the kids that can't pay their athletic fees. And they cut us a check for that, so that the program isn't without because of it. So this was the first step, was to try to get the information from everybody. You know, any other questions? And then I will take direction and move on.
Ladies, are you all finished augmenting Dr. Avinevich's presentation? Ken?
Well, first of all, I'll tell you what I like and then what I don't like. My daughter came home and she said, "Dad, the lunches in the school are awful." And I said, "Why?" She goes, "All they give us is healthy stuff." So I wanna commend you on that. And now, now she's eating it.
She eats every day, though.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know. Yep, she's up to, never mind. Why do we have four different policies?
We have worked very, very hard to make our policies the same. For years, at the elementary levels, the principals wanted the kids to have a full meal regardless. And that's how come some accounts got charged up so high, because even when they owed, the manager was told they had to feed the children a complete meal, which it just kept charging and charging and charging. At the high school level, it has always kind of been my thinking that I'm dealing with young adults. We tell them at least three times before the point of saying, "I'm sorry, you can't have that lunch today." And I would like to point out that when we do in fact come to that point where we say, "You can't have a lunch," it is extremely few and far between. This is not something that happens on a daily basis. It's actually very seldom. And that's why it's so, oh my God, when it does happen, it's kind of the exception. It's not the standard. But, I mean, I think they need to have responsibility, myself. And we try and work with them. We tell them when their account's getting low. We tell them, "Okay, now today I charged. Bring money tomorrow. Tomorrow comes, they still don't have money. Okay, you're charged again. So next time you come through line, you've gotta have money with you." So, I mean, at the high, and remember, this is the high school, not elementary.
Elementary. I don't feel as though it's the child's responsibility. It's the parents'. And if you can come up with some way to get those parents to put money on their accounts, pay their bills, I'm, you know, to take any kind of, moon to take any kind of, you know, responses to how I can get these people to pay. I cannot. I send out certified letters. They come back to me unopened.
Well, that was my concern...
They don't.
Is, are we punishing the child that, you know, he or she goes home every day and says, "Mom, Dad, I need money in my account." And the parents don't do anything about it. And yet, we're just giving them a, well, sundial, sunflower sandwich, whatever it is.
It's a peanut butter sandwich, is what it is.
But are we doing that in front of the other kids? That's why I have an issue, because I like, can we find a way to have these kids go down to the main office and somebody says, "Listen, here's the situation. This is what you have in your account. When you go down to the cafeteria, this is the only thing you can eat." Because it brings attention that if the kid, child is in line and he or she gets up to the register and has baked sausage and mashed potatoes, that was my favorite. And gets up there and is told, "You can't have that," because you're, that's pretty embarrassing. I don't care if you're in the first grade or the 12th grade. That's pretty embarrassing. So I like to see some other, I understand you have obligation, you have a budget to me. But I like to see some of the way to handle that, rather than in line in front of all the other kids. If you can comment on that.
680 kids. You come up with some way we could do that. How do you do that? Especially elementary children who don't even know their names. They don't know their numbers. They don't know what anything is about. You, I mean, we have that privacy thing where they don't know. Our NutriKids system is set up so that they don't know what their status is.
Other, other kids don't know what their status is. It's extremely confidential.
Yes.
Each child has a PIN number. They enter their PIN number. And then it comes up what, if they're free, reduced, or paid, and what their account looks like, if they have money, if they owe money. I don't even know that until that child comes to, in front of me and puts in their number.
I could run a list every day.
Right. But when that child, when that child does that, at that point, you know the situation, right? So why can't they have that lunch? And you jot that down and then tomorrow have that conversation, instead of taking that lunch back.
Because I've already had that conversation three times before it gets to that point.
I have a $300 deficit. How many times do I have the conversation?
I don't know. But I mean, I have a, I don't know, I just have a problem with that. I don't know where, I don't know where...
I totally agree with you.
I don't know where the money comes from, but we need to, we need to find a way, because I just, I think that's awful. And don't take it personal, I just...
We agree. I hate taking a child, I hate taking it away from a small child, a kindergarten child, who has, they don't even know what's going on. We're just, you have to tell your mom.
I'm all set, but I just, I agree that at the high school level, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, they should know. I mean, I take full advantage of my NutriKids, so I know what is, I have an alert that tells me what the balance is.
Parents can monitor how the money is spent.
I'd be more concerned with middle school down to elementary. I'll set, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Mike?
Did I hear correctly that after the second unpaid, unpaid meal, that they get a free peanut butter sandwich?
Yes.
And they keep coming in every day after that and keep getting a free peanut butter sandwich?
Exactly.
I mean, they're not going necessarily hungry. I mean, they're getting fed. And I wanna say there's no such thing as a free lunch, but apparently there is. But someone's paying for it, right? I mean, still, even though it's a peanut butter sandwich.
Yes. And we cannot, we cannot count that as a reimbursable meal.
And I know...
So we're not getting credit for it anywhere.
Yeah, and I know, I can speak from experience at Deccos. You guys are religious about that when it comes to notifying parents. I mean, I've got a piece of paper saying we owe a nickel. I kid, I kid you not. I mean, we called back and said, "Listen, it costs more to send the paper home. Trust me, we'll pay it." You know, and it was like, but now I understand. I mean, you just don't wanna let it get out of hand. You know, and I think you're doing the best you can, and I commend you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I also commend you for the, you know, the work that you do on a daily basis to provide great meals for our kids. Mine being one of them, at Minnit. And he loves it. He never allowed me, he always wanted me to make lunch for him. And after the first day, he was like, "Yeah, here, I'll set. I wanna go in and eat, so thanks." But the thing that I wanna say is that I just, I wanna hear more about what is being done to make the parents accountable. I have to agree with my fellow school committee member that whether it's a, I can understand in the high school that, you know, we have to, you know, do a little bit more when it comes to accountability for the students that are there. But, you know, we, I feel like this is an issue that is just being laid at your feet. That you run a business that, and you have to make the kids pay. And it would be kind of like myself and my working environment, where they basically say, "Just do this." And, but I don't have many tools available to me to make it happen. So that's the reason why I wanna hear so much more about the accountability that we're putting on parents to make that happen. If you don't pay, you know, different kinds of fees, yes, there are things that are taken away from kids, but that it's, we contact the parents, we send out letters, we call them in, we, you know, that every single moment it's flagged that your kid is hungry, they wanna eat, it's a pay service, and there's not any money in the account. So again, just that constant communication to parents to make them accountable, instead of like Kenny was saying, that it's happening on the school line. That just, that breaks my heart to think that any child is, and I'm sure yours too, and you're doing it, that all of a sudden you're saying, "No, and you have to take this instead." And just everything that that does. And that's the kind of, that's what I want parents to understand, that the only person that's suffering in this whole entire scenario are the kids. And so, I would like to suggest that this shouldn't be, this is just my feeling, but ultimately, it's up to the chair and the superintendent or if we wanna vote on it, that I don't think that this should be a policy when a child can't pay from school to school. I think that this should be a policy, a district policy, on exactly what is done and who is, who else is helping out in that situation when it comes to parents and basically what is done. So then, it's a district policy. It's communicated as a district policy. You get help from the district. That it's so much more than just what's happening in that lunch line. That's what I wanna see. So I'd like to ask if we can, if that's already a plan or if this could go to the Policy Review Committee? Or if it's up to the superintendent to take the first shot at it? But one policy, district-wide, on exactly what we do in this kind of situation.
I'll set.
Can I make a comment about the policy? I know the high school and the middle school have student handbooks. And at this time, there is a policy in the handbooks that does speak to this. I just was recently made aware that the part that spoke about this in the high school handbook is no longer there, but it is still there in the middle school handbook. Speaking to, you can charge two lunches. You know, after that, you get peanut butter and sandwich and milk. So there is somewhat of a policy at this time. But I think that we would...
Um, but I think that we would all be very happy to have a district-wide policy and have, um, a little more support from anybody, administrators or whatever, in, in dealing with this.
Cliff, you all set?
Uh, I got a couple, I got a couple of questions, a couple of comments. Um, there's some things here that I absolutely understand, and there's some things that still bother me. And, uh, you know, 'cause we work together and we're friends, some of my students. I admire everything that you folks do, and I know how hard you work. You know, I spent thirty-one years at that high school. I know how hard you work. Um, and I know that you care desperately for those kids. It's not your intent, ever, to embarrass a kid. I absolutely know that. And I, I would not want you to think for one minute that what I say here this evening is any indication as to your sensitivity to these children, because I know what it is. There's a couple of things that bother me, and maybe you can straighten me out, maybe by, uh, making the wrong assumptions. But it seems to me that, um, free and reduced is free and reduced. So, what we're doing is we're, we're, we're making it, we're making meals available to free and reduced. And what we're doing is, we're really putting a, a, another hardship on the working poor. Uh, the people that are working, the people that are trying to struggle, the people that are trying to make ends meet, um, they're the ones, uh, that are in the financial situation where they don't qualify for free and reduced, but yet, they're expected to keep their accounts up, up to date. And I understand that they should keep their accounts up to date. But I also understand how hard it is to make ends meet today. And when, they fall behind in their mortgages, and they fall behind on their insurance payments, and their houses are being foreclosed, and their cars are being repossessed, uh, I can understand where they may fall behind on the lunch program. What the answer is, I don't know. But, I, 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 I sense that we are really, um, we're really giving a double whammy to those folks that are trying to make ends meet, trying to do the right thing, working for a living, and yet not being, not making enough money to qualify for free and reduced. Now, I'm not saying that there aren't people taking advantage of the situation, because we know that there are. But I think that there are enough people to fall into the category that I'm talking about right now, uh, that would, that would necessitate looking at this and, and, and trying to develop a policy that maybe would, uh, would be a little bit more tolerant to, um, the hardships that these families in William are going through right now. So, I guess that brings me to my first question. If I came, if my child came to school and didn't have enough money in the account, and was refused two times, and I brought the account up to date, and the following month, would those two to, two times count, or would the slate be clean? Would be another two times?
Start, start over.
It's start, so he'd have another two times?
Right.
And then if you're paid up, then it would be another two times?
Right.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, I think two or three times, uh, i- is fair. I, I think that, uh, as long as the parents are informed. You know, we, we can't take it for, we can't take, uh, for granted that the child is gonna go home, number one, that the parents are gonna be home. And we can't take, we can't take for granted that, uh, if the child goes home and will give the parents the information, uh, for whatever reason, on what happened in the cafeteria. So, we have to, I, I think that we have to make doubly sure that when we have to charge a lunch, that those parents are informed, that, that, you know, the account is, uh, in default, and they, they need to bring it up to date. So, I, I think that there is a dichotomy here between free lunch and those working poor people that are, that are being handed a whammy. I, I think one of the other things, uh, the beginning of school, I, I'm sure that we're all, all a little bit more flexible beginning of school, because it's helter-skelter.
Right.
So, you know, I'm sure that things may have a tendency to fall through the cracks at the beginning of school, and the system will get ironed out, and, and we'll plug those, we'll plug those gaps as we go along. So, I, I'm not too concerned about what happens, uh, at the beginning of school. But I, I, again, to, to build on what Kenny said, I, I am a little concerned about, um, taking out on the children and the nutrition of the children, uh, for the adult's responsibility or, or lack of, of, um, comfort in disclosing their financial situation or whatever. Um, but if an adult is being irresponsible, or if they're not feeling comfortable divulging their financial situation, I, I, I still have a problem with, with punishing the kids. And that brings me to my last point, or my next to the last point, is no charging breakfast. Breakfast is the most important meal that a child, that a child has. And if we're gonna allow a child to, to charge two lunches, I can't see why we wouldn't allow a child to charge two breakfasts. Second point is, if a child is in the rears for breakfast, then you already know he's not entitled to a, not, to a lunch. Correct?
Right.
All right. So, uh, this no charge for breakfast, I, I, I don't like that at all, to be honest with you. I, I just think that if we're gonna be flexible, and we're gonna allow two charges for lunch, and we are allowed two, two charges for breakfast, 'cause I do believe that breakfast is the most important meal that the children have. Uh, if you have to come forward to school committee, you've got the data to support it. You've got the data showing that you, you were in arrears, one family, three hundred dollars, or, or whatever the arrears are, or whatever it is that you, you have to do. Um, so, the last point that I wanna make is, when you do the free and reduced forms, and you say you get fifty percent, and you don't get a response, uh, on some of them, all right, I think we oughta work overtime to reconnect with the parents that either gave no response or, uh, didn't fill out the forms. Um, because you might, you might see that, uh, there may be some children there that would qualify for free and reduced. So, I think that we oughta work overtime, particularly on those that you didn't get a response for, from, to re-contact even more than once, to make sure that they know that that is available to them, and if they fall within the in, income guidelines, that they were eligible for a free and reduced lunch, which makes that, this problem of, um, the credit system moot. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I hope they take my, um, comments and suggestions in the spirit in which it was given, 'cause I admire the work that they do.
Thank you.
Mike? Uh, hi. It, it's, it seems that in the discussion that we're talking about, a lot of the, a lot of the discomfort comes from, a lo, around, around the stigma, I guess, of, you know, being, you know, singled out in line. And I, I just have a silly question. I mean, do people, do, do kids ever show up and just want to get a peanut butter sandwich and buy it?
Oh, they do.
I mean, yeah, I mean, that's what I sent my son into school with. Brings us lunch in ninety percent of the time.
They aren't allowed a tray or anything associated with the lunch, no desserts, no, they get a sandwich and a milk. Here you go, and they walk out the line.
Ju- just for clarification, though. The problem comes because the cash register is at the end of the line.
Yeah.
So, the child who has taken everything on his tray.
Yeah.
And who owes for the two lunches, then is given the option not to take what he's taken, but to have that peanut butter sandwich. That's where I think the stigma that Kenny talks about, because it's in a public, there are other kids in line, um, you know, they don't necessarily wait to be the last child in line. So, that, that's where that stigma comes in.
If, if we could address that, I think we'd, we'd probably be there. I mean, like I said, the kids are still getting fed. It's just, just not, it might not be exactly what they want.
We, we have the free students and the reduced students also who are trying to buy snacks, and we're taking those off the tray left and right. I mean, it's not just the meals we're taking away. We're taking away snacks from the, that, that they wanna purchase. Um, they have no problem with that. You know, they take it away and they're.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, and go on. But, I see, I, I hate taking that lunch away. I hate it. But the, I can't come up with another way of getting the money from the chil, from the parents.
Thank you.
Well, and I think that goes to, um, I'd like, um, if I can, an answer on whether, um, we could consider making this, I guess there are policies, but can we consider making this a district policy and, and, um, reviewing it, um, a- across the board?
I'll have to try to get clarification from DESI on that, because the food service has their own set of regulations that we have to follow. So, it isn't, it, there are procedures that we do, that are cafeteria procedures, they're not school committee policies.
Being on the policy review, but I also know that there are things that are on there that, you know, that, you know, we, we do have some ability. So, can I ask for an update on that, on our next school committee meeting? 'Cause I'd really, I mean, I just don't wanna leave and.
Before the policy review, I think what I'm hearing. So, that is a meeting for sometime next month?
Well, whether, whether we can consider it as a district-wide policy is what they answer.
Try to get you that information.
Okay. I just don't want this to leave here and then just nothing is done until all of a sudden the next complaint happens. Like, there has to be a next step, and that next step is that, that I feel like this needs to be reviewed and considered as a district-wide policy.
All set?
Yep, thanks.
I'm gonna keep my comments brief, because I think we need to move on. But, I am, I think you are also the victims, as well as the kids. I do not envy your position one iota. Uh, and whether it's apathy, irresponsibility, whatever on the part of the parents, it's hurting kids and it's putting you in awful situations. Um, I would like Dr. Vinnovich to get together with his administrative team and see if you can get more support, because I think you need it. It's just not fair, the position that you're being, uh, put. Um, I commend the work that you're doing. I know this is an extremely emotional situation. I found that myself being emotional, just listening to all of this, it cannot die, it needs to be reviewed, you need to report back, um, and somehow, we need to get you out of an exceedingly uncomfortable position, w- without obviously, um, hurting any kids more than they already are. So, I thank you for being here.
Mr. Chair, could I ask you just one quick question? Real quick, I promise.
Sure.
Is there, i- is this legal or illegal? The question I'm gonna ask you. You said that they get the peanut butter sandwich and they're not charged for it. Why? Why are they not charged for it? Why is that not added to the account that they owe?
Because that's a move that we've tried to make to stop the debt from accumulating even more.
But, still, that should go on to the debt.
If it goes into a NutriKids system, then we would have to charge it as a reimbursable meal, and a peanut butter sandwich and a milk is not a reimbursable meal.
So, you just can't, you just can't add it to the, to the balance?
Right.
Well, we could, if, I mean.
Just.
We're just giving away more food that we're not gonna get paid for, so.
Well, you're not getting paid for the peanut butter and jelly sandwich now?
No.
So, add it to the bill. They already owe you money.
That's why we're giving sun butter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And your being here.
In the last part of my report.
Yes.
Um, which has to do with the warrants. Um, yesterday, I believe, Anna, I think it was yesterday, Anna was at a, um, business administrator's, um, meeting. And, um, there was a handout that confirmed Mike's, um, reading of the statute in that what it separates is that on salary, uh, accounts, payroll, payroll, one signature can be given. But on regular warrants, you need three signatures. And so, the accountant was not correct. Um, I believe Anna met with him. We have a meeting with him tomorrow, both Anna and I. We will let him know of the DESI ruling with the appropriate paperwork that we have. And so, um, I have the bills here today for us to sign. But, since there's no school committee meeting next week, if I could have three people come before Wednesday afternoon to sign, so that we can move them up. Um, our fear when they don't, um, get signed is that we have vendors that come in that have not been paid, and so, you know, just to keep the process moving. So, um, I, that, that's my report, basically to say Mike was right, and thank you. And, um, we clarified it.
You're welcome.
I, I just have a question. I, I, 'cause I missed one of the meetings. But, correct me if I'm not wrong, didn't this all emanate from the fact that we were told that the bills were tired and that we needed, needed just one signature? It didn't come from us, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
It, it came from the town accountant.
That's correct.
That it was an option to do it that way.
Correct.
But as it turns out, that is not an option.
Right.
And he has.
No, that's good.
And in a conversation with Anna, he has now reversed himself on that position.
Okay.
So, while they may be meeting later this week, he has already verbally reversed himself, even though I met with him twice, to get him to confirm that he was right, and he asserted. Anyway, bottom line is, I would like a motion of reconsideration, because we in fact voted to do this, and I think we need, now need to reverse that.
Well, I voted in favor, so I'll make the motion.
Okay, please do.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we return to the policy of three signatures on all warrants, other than payroll.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? We're back to the original status quo of three signatures on all warrants? And the only issue here is, we need to be timely in getting into the office.
Point of, point of water?
Yes.
I think the vote was to reconsider, then you have to take another vote.
Um.
No?
Yes. Fine.
I, I don't care. I just don't wanna.
I don't care either, but if, when in doubt, do it.
All right.
So.
To reconsider past.
Okay, yes.
So, I make, I make a motion.
Yes.
Uh, to return to the, uh, previous system of three signatures on all warrants, uh, other than payroll.
All those in favor?
No, you need a second.
Second.
Second? We have a second here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. The key here is, in order for us to make sure that the bills are approved by us before they get paid, we need to be timely in our approval process. So, when you get emails from Michelle or Anna and asking you to come into the building, please do so as soon as possible. And the deadline is usually sometime on Wednesday, is that correct?
Wednesday noon, I believe.
Wednesday noon. Okay? Thank you very much. Um, Dr. Vinnovich? I'm sorry, Mike?
Uh, well, I'll, I'll wait for.
No, no, no.
It's not related to this.
What is it related to?
Some, some other superintendent report stuff.
Super, oh, go ahead.
All right. Um, li- likewise, um, I, I just figured I'd, I'd mention it now. Uh, I did, I did follow up as well with the use of school choice funds for transportation fees, you know, to, to balance out that account. And as it turned, and, and you, you had come back with some DESI information, and I followed up with, with that, with, um, with DESI. And, uh, and as it turned out, um, they were unambiguous with that as well, in that, in that it, it can be used. Just to let you know, I'll send you what they sent me, but, but you, you, you were right in that.
Thank you.
Good. All set?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Vinnovich?
Okay, I've asked, um, Mrs. Rotella to man the, um, slide projector, so that I can stay up here. And hopefully I can be heard. For the greater public and for those of you who did not get the paper version, um, this is the document that is the self-evaluation. Um, I believe you had to go to a website to download the, um, document, because it was so large. Even when Michelle tried to, when I tried to send to Michelle individual goal subcategory evidence, they wouldn't go, because they were too big.[1653.41] Even after zipping, they were still too big. So we then put it on a flash drive, and we were able to put it on the website for you to be able to access. And Michelle, this will be available on the website, will, soon?
When you're done.
Okay, thank you. So in the document, those of you that got the paper version, there was a table of contents. I believe there was the slide presentation that I'm about to give. We have the superintendent evaluation form. And just to remind the general public, this is done in two parts. There is the goals and objectives that are worth 60 points. And there are the general responsibilities that are worth 40 points. In each of the subcategories of the goals. So the first goal was student performance. And, let's see if that's on my presentation. Sorry, I'm going from, yes. So I broke student performance when I set my goals with you last year, I believe in September, into student performance 1A and 1B. 1A has to do with the district. Based on the assessment of need and the district's readiness and resulting design, the district will provide training for all educators and administrators in a rollout, a response to intervention framework for English Language Arts and Literacy in grades K through six, and assess its effectiveness during the rollout process. You will find a sub-sheet called Goals and Objectives A. And I have the action steps, the target and timeline, the progress met, and the evidence listed. And then in that file, you will find the evidence listed that I have listed here. So we had a separate section, and the SMART goal that was put together last year as well. So we started with the SMART goal. That became this action steps with timelines, progress met, and evidence, just to make it a little more readable for folks. And then all of the evidence provided. I am not going to go through all the evidence. You are all very capable of reading it all. But if there are any questions about any of the evidence, either people can ask me this evening, or they can email me, and I'd be happy to give any clarifications that are needed. So, the implementation of Wareham's RTI program took the cooperation and support of all of our directors, principals, and staff. So even though this is a self-evaluation of the superintendent, it is the entire administrative team that helped implement these various initiatives. During the 2011-12 school year, we trained all K to six educators. They all took a 36-hour course offered by Teachers 21, a consultant group, in the response to intervention. And grades two, three, and four had coaching during the year. And the remaining grades are having coaching this fall. And by December, all of that coaching, I believe, will have been completed for the rollout of our RTI system. So this really was basically a two-and-a-half-year process to have the whole thing rolled out and for it to be operational. Goal 1B, which would be the next slide, provide a system of integrated programs and curriculum with rigorous expectations that maximizes the proficiency in all core subject areas and closes the achievement gap for all students. When we are listening to Jan's presentation, which will give the MCAS scores, which came off of embargo this morning, it will be clear that we didn't do as well as we had hoped to do. I make no excuses for that. I am disappointed with the scores. You will see that in our next presentation. Our MCAS scores have not increased, but look at the action steps this goal shows. We have implemented a new curriculum, completely revamped our evaluation system, purchased and trained materials for staff, new data collection, that would be the INFORM system that we had, the RTI implementation, recording instrument that is INFORM. And the most important part, we have begun a paradigm shift as it is related to building a learning community. Instead of evaluation being a once-a-year, somebody comes in and somebody does what, in some cases, not complimentary, would be called a dog and pony show. It is now a series of walkthroughs, unannounced observations. The association is moving towards ratification, which we hope occurs Friday, I believe. And we have moved, with a number of other districts, to fully implementing the new educator evaluation system.
There's a question.
Mike?
Did, did we meet that deadline for the statewide? I know they were saying some, some, a lot of communities didn't meet it. And I thought we were on track. Did we meet that deadline?
We are on track. We sent in our information. We were given the okay by DESI, but we did not have a ratified agreement by the date they wanted. And neither did quite a few districts, as I learned today.
So, so we didn't make it, huh?
We did not make it, no. As part of it, there needed to be a notice to the staff before ratification. And since we really didn't get this completed until.
July 25th.
July 25th, okay. So we had to wait for the staff to come back to notice them. This is the union had to do. And make it available to them to read and ask questions before they could have the ratification.
Had we met that deadline, how much were we looking to receive in additional funding?
Nothing.
Oh, okay.
My own, my own view is, if it gets ratified, this.
Friday?
Friday. In my own mind, we'll have met at least my deadline.
Okay.
Meaning, we went through a process. It was an exceedingly long process. But it will have been effective, because the first time we asked them to ratify, we were successful. If, if in fact, it doesn't get ratified, then I think we should be chastised, because we spent years putting this together, and we still didn't convince the majority of the, of the staff that it was in their best interest to ratify it. So technically, it doesn't really mean anything. And I can tell you, we're in a lot better shape than most districts.
Okay, thank you.
So that paradigm shift of having a trusting learning environment, where educators are able to talk about teaching and learning, and have supervisors come in and have dialogue around what can be improved, is the environment that we are looking to have. That does not happen overnight. It is a process. It is why we've been sitting at the table with the association for the last two years. And we'll continue sitting with them as we continue through this process. But we are well underway. Goal two has to do with technology. Expand the application, integration of technology to improve learning, instruction, and the organization of the school community. Some of the things that were accomplished underneath this, the iPod, iPad Pilot program was very successful. When funds become available, I recommend expanding this program.
Question.
Excuse me.
We have expanded our communications to Facebook and have a draft of a new design for our website under review. The need to find resources to support a transition to a wireless environment and continue to educate our staff to use technology to enhance learning must continue. The third area was about community. Expand the partnership and involvement between parents and the school community in all aspects of the educational process, including, but not limited to, direct involvement at the school-building level as true partners in the education of their children at home. We have expanded the use of Power School to elementary schools with progress reports and report cards. I hope to continue this expansion during the following year. We have involved the community through school councils and public hearings and supporting various community groups. Our upcoming Cape Verde trip shows that our global education team is doing some great work. Last year's celebration for global education was very well attended. Newsletters, Facebook, the website, and cable shows are some of the ways we have tried to communicate with the public. One might reference town's vote on our tax increasing questions as a failure to communicate, but in today's economy, it was a gamble that we lost. Resources.
Yes, thanks. With regard to Power School at the elementaries, I, I thought that hadn't been done yet. I thought we were wait, it couldn't be done until computers were upgraded and the wireless networks and everything were upgraded.
No, the action steps on the SMART goal were to have the progress reports and report cards done in Power School, and that has been done. So in other words, the teachers input, do the grade input into Power School. We print them from Power School. They are archived there. What isn't there yet is the online grade book and the access parents would have through that portal.
So, yeah, so parents have no benefit of this at all? It's all internal to the school?
Well, I think getting their report cards, the progress reports that way is a benefit. It's a first step. And as we referenced before, when we get to setting the goals for next, I would hope that that maybe would be a goal to actually have that operational at the end of next year.
But, all right, but to clarify, like, as a parent, I'm not going to see any difference. It's going to, it's just internal to the school.
But what, I did what I said I was going to do on the, on our action goal.
Okay.
Resources at number four. Procure sustainable resources necessary to provide an excellent learning experience. We met all the targets and timelines for awarding a space needs study that was needed, but did not receive the support of the committee to be awarded. Our safety plan has been enhanced with the online schematics showing all the heating, electrical, and HVAC shut-offs. Some of our fields and grounds have been improved with the cooperation from sports organizations and Home Depot. Two of our playgrounds were improved because of the efforts of volunteers, parents, benefactors, and staff. The year in review.
Mike?
That was number four you were on, right?
Yes.
With regard to the, the letter C, collaboration with sports organizations and community organizations for improved field and grounds. And I noticed you've got, you know, the youth soccer improved the Deacon's and Minut Fields, and Babe Ruth worked on the scoreboard and everything.
Did I miss one?
Huh?
Did I misagree?
No, 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 I don't know. But, but, but what was the superintendent's role in that? I mean, did these, did they work mostly with the principals of the schools? Like, how did you get involved with that?
We had the meetings in my office with the youth sports groups.
Okay.
About the dugout improvements, about the field improvements.
Okay, thank you.
And as I said, to begin with, these goals are accomplished through our administrative team. Year in review. Year two of three of the RTI implementation. This is year two of four of the R-T triple T grant. The new evaluation system for educators is being implemented with training that began last spring. Many districts are hiring consultants, but Mrs. Rotella and I are doing the training of our staff. Year one of the new ELA curriculum has been implemented. Training for all staff began in Pearson Inform. The iPad Pilot got underway. The Wareham Public Schools Facebook was launched. Curriculum committees have been embedding technology within the standards. Unit B administrators and cafeteria managers negotiated and settled contracts. The Transportation Action Committee has continued to meet. What was needed to support teaching and learning was cut by $2 million, but yet, school opened on time, and all students had a program. New leadership and structure at the cooperative school was put into place. We have a new leadership at the East Wareham Early Learning Center. We implemented budget cuts throughout the system, and we brought forward the first educational override seen by Wareham voters. Perhaps the timing was wrong, or the message wasn't loud enough. But I have tried to make the case that the lack of financial support for the education in this town is hurting the educational process. For people who want to blame the messenger, that is your right in a free country. But I request that you reflect on what you can do to better the education of our students. That is my presentation. We'll be able to move on, Mr. Chair, and await the committee's response.
So, today is the 19th. Our next meeting is October 3rd. On September 28th, by the close of business, I would either like a paper copy given to Michelle in a sealed envelope, or an electronic copy mailed to me, emailed to me, of the document that you received electronically, or the paper version here. Okay? I just want everybody to understand that at that point, while your individual versions will be available, I will summarize them, and you'll have the opportunity on the meeting on October 3rd. I'll summarize them in the sense of creating a, an overall score. And you'll have the opportunity on October 3rd to say anything you'd like that was in the document. I do want you to keep in mind, from a score point of view, we voted back on September 21st of 2011, the following weighting for the goals. So if you look on the second, well, the first page, but the back of the first page, there are, there will be four overall goal areas. Student Achievement, Community Technology, and Resources. Please make sure, when you're listing those four, the weights for those four will be 25, 20, 10, and 5 respectively. If you want to make a note of that, I'll repeat it. So when you see that first line, line, the weight, the first one should read 25, the second one should read 20, the third one should be 10, and then the fourth one should be 5. And then you can weight it however you see fit from.
I'm not waiting.
No points.
Excuse me, sorry, thank you. Then you can score it however you see fit from 0 to 10. And then the math will work out, and I will take it from there. Does that make sense to everybody? Ken? Yep? Mike? No, this is new to you. If you have any questions, feel free to.
Yeah, I have questions, I'll ask you.
Yes. Okay, so the deadline, close of business, which were from Michelle, is, what, 3:00, 3:30 on a Friday?
3:00.
3:00 o'clock on a Friday. If you could have either the paper version or the electronic version to me. And if you give the paper version to Michelle, please seal it in an envelope, because these are confidential until, until I get them and they're made public on the 2nd.
Are they embargoed?
No, they're not embargoed. I, I said the 2nd, I meant the 3rd. So October 3rd. Okay? I'm getting to hate that term embargo. Okay. If there are no further questions, the floor is yours, Jan.
Thank you. I think, I hate the term embargoed as much as anyone. When I was trying to put this presentation together, and even the preliminary results and the preliminary reports were not fully available to administrators until the beginning of the week of the 10th. And I thought, well, this, the reports are here in the security portal. Why can't I just copy and paste? This seems like a very easy process to put them in this presentation. Well, they were so thoroughly embargoed that they were encrypted, so that when you copied them and attempted to paste it into another document, you came up with hieroglyphics. So I didn't feel you wanted hieroglyphics. So we, I recreated these reports. I do want to begin by saying the embargo ended today. I did go on the Department of Education Elementary and Secondary Education website. All of the information that is here is on the website through multiple, multiple screens. So hopefully, this is much more discernible. This will be on our website tomorrow. These scores are available in this new system of accountability called the Progress and Performance Index. I want to apologize before I begin. I know it is long, it is lengthy. It is not quotable, what my husband thought of 76 slides in a single presentation. But I trust that we will skim through some of these, and you've had a chance to read them. I want to begin by sharing with you what are the high points of this change in accountability.
Excuse me, Jan, just one quick question. Since this is a new system, and there's a ton of information here, I would like you to pause at the end of each slide and give the committee the opportunity to ask questions. I'd like you to hold your comments till after the presentation is over, but feel free to ask questions, because I think it's important to have answers to those questions as a base of knowledge as we proceed.
Okay.
Please.
Be happy to. It is literally goodbye AYP, hello PPI. So adequate yearly progress is gone, and the Progress and Performance Index is here. As you know, I introduced this to the committee and the community at the July 11th school committee meeting, and in fact, have copies of that presentation here with me, as well as tonight's. What happened, just very briefly, to give an overview for those who were not present, is that the No Child Left Behind law was enacted 2001, put into place in 2002. is that the No Child Left Behind law was enacted 2001, put into place in 2002. Through that law, the goal was that 100% of all students would be proficient by 2013-14. There was a baseline. The baseline was changed multiple times. Target goals were changed annually. Achievement levels only were in the formula, and high-needs students counted multiple times, because if you happen to be a student who was from a low-income family, who also was a minority, who also had special needs, your score counted three times. So, the Commonwealth, in its inimitable wisdom, said, hey, this isn't fair. They applied for the Race to the Top Grant. As soon as Massachusetts was granted the Race to the Top Grant, they were eligible to apply for an NCLB waiver. They did, along with 11 other states. Massachusetts was the second or third state to receive a waiver. Many other states have since. What they proposed, and what is now in place in this Progress and Performance Index, is that instead of absolute achievement goal of 100% proficiency for all students, the goal is a reduction in achievement gaps by 2017, or in five years, by halving. And what halving means is, it's H-A-L-V-I-N-G, is that if a district's current composite performance index is, say, 82, 82 from 100 is 18, half of that distance is nine points. So by 2017, the district is expected to be at 91 CPI. So that's what halving means. The baseline and target goals do not change. They are based on 2011 results, which is good if you did poorly in 2011, because you don't, you have shorter terms. Not so good if you did great in 2011 and not so good in 2012, then you have bigger jumps to make. Also, under the Progress and Performance Index, there are multiple indicators, including achievement levels and student growth. The biggest change that directly impacts Wareham is that high-needs students count only once. There is now a subgroup called high-needs, so regardless of how many subgroups the student may be in, that student is only counted once, but all subgroups are reported. So that is the overview of the change. Any questions? What are the multiple indicators of the Progress and Performance Index? There are five indicators for all school levels. ELA achievement, that is the composite performance index, that is based on the composite performance index. Mathematics achievement, based on the CPI. Science achievement, which is new, science never counted before. Then also, ELA growth and improvement, based on the median SGP of student growth percentile, and the mathematics growth improvement, based on median SGP of students in the district and/or schools. Two additional indicators for high schools and districts are the cohort graduation rate, and that is both four- and five-year cohort rate. One of them, the goal is 95%, and a reduction in the annual dropout rate to zero. Then there are extra points. The extra points are for decreasing warning or failure and/or increasing advanced percentages by 10% or more. Each indicator gets a score of 0, 25, 50, 75, or 100. The total of the indicator scores is divided by the number of indicators, either five or seven, and that equals the Progress and Performance Index. When I presented this to faculty on Monday, I used the analogy of a dart game, not because I'm good at darts, but it made sense in my mind, and many of our teachers felt it made sense to them. So if you think of the Progress and Performance Index as the bull's eye on a dartboard, the center red circle, or sometimes, well, it's usually red, is if you're above the target and you get a full 100 points. The next ring around, which might be yellow, means it's within the target range, not above target, but within the target range, you get 75. The next ring, whatever color that may be, you miss the target, but you're improving, you're heading for that bull's eye, you get 50. The outermost ring, which means there's no change whatsoever, but at least you hit the dartboard, you get 25 points. If you miss the dartboard altogether, then you get 0. That is the arbitrary scoring. So it doesn't matter how close you come to the target. If you don't hit target, you only get 50. But if you hit that target, you get 75. 75 is the goal score of the Progress and Performance Index. Questions? I know it's getting, it's clear as mud, the mud may get a little foggy here, but we'll try to keep it clear. Some additional facts regarding the Progress and Performance Index. All schools and districts will receive both annual and cumulative PPI scores. The cumulative score is four years of data, going back to 2009. This means they recalculated the scores, because we didn't have SGP in 2009, and they put them into the new formula, they went back and got the high-needs groups, recalculated them as one group, and 2009 counts once. Then 2010 was recalculated into the new formula, that counts twice. 2011 counts three times, and that's our baseline, and 2012 results count four times. Each of these cumulative scores are added, the total is divided by 10, and that equals the cumulative PPI. It's like a weighted system. The 2012 results will count this year as our annual PPI, and then will figure into our cumulative PPI. Obviously, next year, it'll be 2010 through 2013. Based on the cumulative Progress and Performance Index score, every school and district that has a minimum group of 20, or 30 for subgroup, 20 for aggregate, will be given a level. Then the district is assigned the level of its lowest school. Questions? Okay, marvelous. Now, what did we do in Wareham? The big picture, this is an overview of the Composite Performance Index, the achievement levels, not the specific numbers, but the achievement levels of our students, based on 100% of our students. This means everyone in the red is the percentage of students who are in the warning or failure range. And as you can see, that has gone down over the years from when I first came into the district. Needs improvement is in yellow. Proficient is green. Blue is advanced. The gray at the very top, that's called other, those are MCAS, all students who didn't, whose score wasn't translated into either progressing or achieving. It also may include students from another district whose scores we don't have. It may include students new to this country. The PAS, or purple there at the end in front of maroon, are students who passed MCAS by virtue of a retest. So their scores are not calculated into the percentages, but they did pass by virtue of a retest. Those are the district performance levels.
Go ahead.
Retests, they took it and then they retook it, or that they just weren't available on that day and took it another time.
The testing window is long enough that most of the students who are absent are given an opportunity for makeup, but they could have been out of the country and have to qualify for a retest. But they would have had to, in grade 10, which is the only grade level where retests are offered, they could only take a retest if they have taken the original grade 10 test and scored below needs improvement. They have to take the retest if they scored below 220, so that, which is the new, the needs improvement threshold. If they scored between 220 and 240, and they want to raise their score, they can also take a retest.
Thank you.
But is it, is it fair to say that to, the column that is not gray or maroon adds up to, if my eyes are correct, 80%, of the 100%? Correct?
In grade 10, yes, it does. 80% of our students completed the test at these levels in grade 10.
Right, so to figure out what, for example, the green bar represents as a true percentage of 100% of the cohort of 80%, I'd have to do a simple proportion
Yes.
in order to use that, because the gray and the maroon are really not part of the characterization of advanced, proficient, et cetera.
Yes. This just shows the total student body, not
Right.
It is not a total, true total of the test score, it's just a total of the participating student body.
Okay.
Math?
Yes, Cliff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go back, please.
The gray, I guess this, I'm losing something here. So the gray and the maroon at the top of those bars have absolutely nothing to do with 80%? I don't, oh, I see, that's participation rate, the 80%? I mean, that
The 100%, it represents 100% of the students in the high school in grade 10 last year.
Right, but I mean, some of the colors indicate their performance level, needs improvement, failure, okay? But, except at the top.
Yes.
The top, it really doesn't mean anything.
And no, it does not. And we could have left that off completely.
What you're saying is, you still gotta do a little calculation
Correct.
in terms of
To figure out what the true
If you wanted the true graph.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Well, that's kind of a silly way to do it, but that's okay.
Again, these were based on preliminary results
I know.
You know, and I can redo these, and now that we've got official, I'll bring them back to you.
Cindy, don't hesitate to ask questions if it
No, is this your, your calculations or the state's?
These are our calculations. I worked with my secretary, Elise Katerius, based on the state's preliminary results.
Okay, but I mean, this graph is your, is your graph?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to insult you.
That's okay. No insult taken.
I was insulting the state.
These are their designations, and I
I know.
You know, what can I say? There's some of it that gets mighty interesting.
Thank you.
Science is where most of our students do end up taking a retest, although this is changing this year. We had the highest ratio of passing on the first time this year, which is directly, I believe, related to the fact that we have changed some of our science offerings. We're offering introductory physics in grade 9 with a new curriculum that we were able to purchase with a STEMS grant two years ago. Everyone's been trained in it, it's a very hands-on based program. So more of our students are taking and passing that science exam in 9th or 10th grade. SGP. This is, these are actual test scores. And someone from the Department of Education didn't like this graph, because it was actual SGP. If you go onto the Department of Ed website, they use the median SGP, and for example, in grade 4, it states that the median SGP is 60, and that 51% of our students scored at target or above, which is true. However, I wanted to represent for our teachers the actual percentage of students who had individually earned SGPs at the above target, that 60 to 80% range, you know, on that bell curve, how many were on target, 40 to 60? How many were high but below target? How many were very low? And how many were extremely low? So these are the actual percentages of our students and their actual SGPs at each of the grade levels in ELA. Then if we look at math, these are the actual SGPs of our students by percentage in mathematics, so that our instructional leaders and our department chairs and our principals can go into the graphs and click on the red, find out who the students are, and know who they need to target with specific instructional support.
Are you telling this to the committee, that, let's take grade 4, for example, that we essentially have a reverse bell?
Yes.
That's really quite a, that's really quite a
An inverted bell.
An inverted bell is the results for our students.
Yes, in grade 4.
That is truly a remarkable result. I, I'm not even, I'm not even sure how to characterize it, but I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly.
Yes.
In ELA?
I'm looking at math right now.
Oh, math.
Yes.
I'm dumbfounded. Okay.
There's a couple of factors here that are gonna come out, but yes, it's, we have some definite, definite needs.
Well, that's not really my point.
I understand, your point is
I'm breaking my own rule about commenting versus questions, but this is such a phenomenal result, that we have almost as many failures as we have advanced.
Or we have almost as many students who have
In terms of growth.
Yes.
Little or no growth, as we have students who have shown absolute incredible growth.
Yes.
Yes.
That is not exactly what you call a predictable result.
No, it is not.
I'm gonna refrain, go ahead, keep going, unless another member of the committee has, go ahead.
We are doing a lot of digging.
I'm breaking my own rule, go ahead.
All right. Those are the graphs. Now, let me go into some charts that you're more familiar with, and computers making noises at me. This is a chart you've seen every year. It shows the Composite Performance Index from one year to the next. You can see the increases in, sort of flatlining in ELA. One of the things that I need to point out is that the MCAS assessment in grades 3 through 8 changed this year. Because of the new standards, the assessments have changed. And in May of 2012, the MCAS assessed only on those standards that were the same in the old standards and the 2011 standards. So any of the standards in ELA or math that were below the rigor or below the current grade level of the new standards were not included in the test. So that, so we've got composite performance indexes, but we're not necessarily comparing apples and apples.
Can you tell the committee what percentage of that, of the questions were impacted by that change in rigor?
I can't, because they had not released all of the test items as of Monday. I will be happy to bring that information to the committee as soon as I am able to determine that.
Thank you.
Yes.
So we don't have that last column, right?
Yes, you do, you have 2012.
I do?
Unless it got cut off in your print.
Yeah. Oh, I see, I got you, I understand. Go ahead. Yep.
Math? Again, you'll see that we're about the same, or have dropped slightly in mathematics, in CPI. This is the entire district.
The change in rigor occurred for both math and English?
Yes, they, both assessments.
Thank you.
The SGP trends for the district are there before you. And those are based on median student growth percentiles. Blue being ELA, red being math.
Would you go back one, please?
Sure.
And just so, my memory is, that, that, the y-axis of that graph goes from, well, I don't know, what is that?
35 to 55.
35 to 55?
Yes.
The state expects you to be somewhere 51 to 59 is on target, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again for ELL, ELA, and math? What is the state at?
The state target in student growth percentile is, they say roughly 40 to 60, 10 points, either side of 50. On target is 51 to 55. points either side of fifty, and on target is fifty-one to fifty-nine.
For both?
For both, that says in student growth.
On target is fifty-one to fifty-nine.
Yes.
Yep.
But this is median, and the state will tell you median SGP is the least accurate because it's an average of averages, so we'll get into, that's why we took the actuals in the stu, in the earlier graphs. Looking at a breakdown specifically of the progress and performance index, this is looking at the district, again, we have the increased details for students in high needs, this chart, this slide specifically just restates what you've already seen, it also reminds you that points are awarded at a, at the level of one hundred for above target, seventy-five for on target, fifty for improved but below target, and twenty-five for no change, zero for declined, the extra credit is for equal to or greater than ten percent increase in advanced performing students, and a ten percent or greater decrease in warnings and failures. The district level report, Wareham is a level three district, based on the scores of our lowest school, which happens to be the middle school, which is level three, so the district is awarded a level three. The seven indicators are, as I explained earlier, both achievement, SGP, graduation, and dropout rates, the total of points awarded for each of the four years is listed, divided by the number of indicators, you have the annual PPIs for each of the four years, and then the cumulative index for all four years. Again, your goal is seventy, our goal is seventy-five. If we look at the actual chart for the awarding of points, this is in your PowerPoint, this is how the points were awarded in each of the four years for each of the seven indicators, as well as extra credit. Are there any questions? High need students, again, this is that one subgroup of high need students, total of points awarded for each of the four years, divided by the seven indicators, the annual PPIs, or progress and performance index, and the cumulative index. So our cumulative index for both high needs and all students is in the fifty-one to fifty-three range, and the breakdown for high need students is on the next slide. The one good news in all of this is that the gap between all students and high need students has been decreased, and if we look at our, what is our target CPI under the new progress and performance index, is that in 2017, we are expected to be at ninety-two point three, which means, rising from the eighty-four point five that we have this year for all students in ELA, we are expected to increase to the ninety-two point three in five years, which is less than eight points. For high need students, we have, we are currently at seventy-eight point eight, and we're expected to go up just under eleven points to eighty-nine point four. In mathematics, again, we're currently at seventy-four point two, we are expected to rise to eighty-eight point one in 2017, or about fourteen points, and for high needs, we are currently at sixty-seven point six, we are expected to rise nearly twenty points in CPI by 2017, those are our targets. So if we have an eleven point increase in five years, that's just over two points of increments each year, if we make that two point increase, then we would get the seventy-five for being on target. Any questions? Looking at a specific school, looking at the John W. Decker School, we look at the big picture, their performance levels are here, again, you have that gray group of students who either did not take the test or didn't, were not scored in the test, but of all the students who took the test, you have the percentage of students in warning, needs improvement in yellow, proficient in green, and advanced in blue. For mathematics, slightly different ratio of students, but still increasing the number of students out of warning. If I don't see a hand raised, Mr. Chairman, I'll just continue. For science at Decker, this is only grade five, takes science, and in the four levels in science, there's needs improvement low and needs improvement high, on target and above, this is SGP, I'm sorry, this is not science, this is ELA. This, we just have ELA in math at the elementary, science was not available until this week. So ELA, SGP, we have more stu, again, our students seem to fall at one end or the other of the bell curve, if we think of SGP as a bell curve. At, in math, we have a higher level of students who need more improvement, greater improvement in growth. The CPI comparison over the six years, you see it there, again, we have a little, we're comparing some different tests, but we have the CPIs staying pretty much flat, and this year, there were enough English language learners at Decker that it became a subgroup, so it is reported out. Any question? Mathematics at Decker? Question? Yes.
Yes.
The new math curriculum was put in place last year, correct, or the year before?
Twenty-ten, they showed, if you see, the new curriculum went in pla, went into twenty-ten, eleven, so last year, twenty-eleven, test scores were ba, was the first year that students were assessed with the new curriculum.
In twenty-eleven?
In twenty-eleven, the new curriculum is aligned with the Common Core standards, they did very well on a test aligned with the old frameworks, then the new test, which only assessed standards in the two sets of standards, the two, two frameworks, they did not do as well. But they're still, they have the new curriculum, the new program.
You all set?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The student growth percentile trends at Decker? Translating the results to progress and performance index, Decker is a level two school, which means they did not meet the target PPI of seventy-five, the total awarded points for each of the four years are there, it is divided by five, not seven, because obviously, as an elementary school, they don't, they're not given either graduation or dropout rate, their progress and performance index over the four years is listed there in the recalculated scores, they did meet their target in twenty-eleven, but not in twenty-twelve, the cumulative PPI is fifty-six, yes, Mike?
Yeah, getting back to Rhonda's question about when everyday math started, and you're saying how it was aligned one way, and now it's aligned a different way with the new frameworks and such, right?
Well, the program has always been aligned with the new frameworks, the assessments were changed.
The assessments were changed, now, and, I mean, we're kinda tanking there, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, would you expect to see that, similar results in other districts that adopted everyday math?
I don't know that it's everyday math, I, I think there's a combination of a higher level of assessments, a higher reading level that is expected in understanding the questions they're reading, I think that impacts it, remember, when we talked about the change in the curriculum frameworks and the standards, we said that the reading levels went up one half to one full year, so we're seeing in our grade five students a real bottoming out, and the, but that is where the reading level has raised a full year, so our instruction has to raise. There is a lot of research that shows, over time, everyday math has solid and sustainable increases in math, understanding, knowledge, and performance, there is some research in some corners, not born up by the National Math Association, that everyday math shows an initial gain, and then drops off before it gains again, so it's, there's some mixed research out there, but the body of evidence says that over time, it does prove to improve student math, understanding, comprehension, and sustained math knowledge, now, what, however, it is strongly dependent on students' literacy understandings, because there's a lot of reading in that math text, so we know that our teachers have to do a lot more with math vocabulary and math reading comprehension.
Um, well, maybe that dovetails, I mean, I mean, whereas we're tanking on, on math, we're doing pretty well on ELA, SGP, right, in, at Decker, on this chart?
Yes.
So, I mean, I mean, the kids are, are reading and understanding, right?
Yes.
Be careful how you interpret SGP.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, SGP is growth from the previous year based on a cohort.
So I guess it depends on, on how much you need to grow?
Exactly, so if you were to look at the CPI in, in math, it dropped, if you look at the CPI in English, for, the aggregate for all of the students, it was basically flat. So, I mean, until you, part of the problem with MCAS results is, number one, it's a snapshot of, of a two-day test, number two, it, it's, you're not looking at individual students, you have to really pull out two things out of MCAS to get any instructional valued information out of it, and that is who the students are, and what test items they struggled with, you have to look at those patterns and those gaps, and that's what we start, that's what our teachers started doing on Monday.
Um, to, to, to kind of build on what, what the chair just said, what, what would you credit that growth in, in the ELA, was it just that much that needed to grow?
There was that much room to grow, and the other thing that our students have improved on, if, well, some of you will remember, about three or four years ago, we brought before the committee a new writing program, and structure of frameworks that we brought in called Six Traits, there's been a greater emphasis on writing, specifically writing open response, writing to a prompt, writing to questions, and our students' writing and our open response answers, as we started to dissect the test, has really improved. However, what, what, in looking at the test item analysis, what our students generally are not doing well is detail reading, is citing details and evidence to support conclusions, and that would directly impact their math comprehension because of the details.
Okay, okay, when do parents get their individual students' MCAS scores?
The box were delivered, boxes were delivered to the superintendent's office, I saw them today, met, and met with Michelle, they are coming to my office tomorrow, they will go out to the schools tomorrow, and then the school secretaries will distribute them to parents, I don't believe the superintendent has set a date yet, but I would assume that they'd have them know later than Monday.
And does the superintendent send out the letter that they usually send out, you know, with, I think it's by law, that where we stand as a district?
That will come out by October thirty-first.
By October thirty-first.
The, the school and district report card comes out, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
The parent report, I have a copy of a blank report back at my seat, it's a four-page report on every student's profile that will come out to parents.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I did, have one more question.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm going back, I just wanna make sure that I understand that when you're saying that it's the assessments that have become.
I'm saying that's only one factor, that's by no means an excuse.
I just wanna make sure that, it's not that our kids are learning, or our kids are there, but it's just the assessments that there's a problem, and I just wanna make sure that, that, that's not.
Well, our students, I mean, and that's why I said to you, MCAS is, is a big test, and it's a snapshot, you have to really drill down into it, and get into the student results individually, and into the test item results, and in digging down into it, we, we find there are problems, that our students are not showing growth, I mean, they're having difficulty in English Language Arts identifying details, just provide evidence and support conclusions, that was one thing that came out of our initial distilling, if you will, of the results for English Language Arts, when we were working in the small groups on Monday, so are they showing progress in other areas? Yes, in their open response, in their short and long essays, they're showing progress, so, no, I will not sit here and say that our students are learning in all, are making progress in all areas, are they learning? Yes, are they learning at a sufficient rate to show significant progress in this kind of an assessment? Not yet.
One last question that I had about this, because I was part of the MCAS review last year, and one of the concerns when doing a true assessment of where our children are, is that they wouldn't, they don't give us all the questions, they give us a snapshot.
Oh, that's correct.
Is that the same thing this year?
That is the same thing, they give us even less.
So, I mean, the only thing that I would say is that it's difficult to do a true assessment on actually what's going on with our kids, when we can't get a full snapshot of that, that was the same problem, so, you know, I can understand digging in, and you're starting to see clues, but, now I'm, I'm breaking your rule, so I'll save it until the end, sorry.
But, question?
Yes.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, that information is broken, is broken down
By standard.
By, by, by subject category?
Yes.
You know, number cents, whatever, so, I mean, we can make, I, I know we, we can't make minute judgments, but we can make broad judgments on what the students know and are able to do, correct?
Yes, and we can make broad judgments as to where our curriculum and instruction needs to provide additional focus.
Correct, right.
Absolutely. Through the chair?
Thank you, prior to going to the, the PPI method and such, Decker was considered, what, level one?
No, Decker has been a level two school.
Level two, and, and, and for the audience and such, what does level two mean?
Means that the school is not meeting its target in either achievement or growth, or both.
Whereas level three is, they're in the bottom twenty percent of the whole state?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Thank you.
As a level two school, Decker did not meet its target, we showed that the PPI, I believe I've already been on this slide, did meet the target in twenty-eleven, but not in twenty-twelve, for all students, and this is how it broke down, and this will give you an idea of that, that initial huge improvement in mathematics last year, where there was a hundred points, so above target for increasing mathematics last year, this year, because that target was so high, it's bumped up again, and they showed no change whatsoever.
No, they declined.
They declined, you're right. For high need students, the school did not meet the target of seventy-five, declined in twenty-twelve compared to twenty-eleven in the progress and performance index. And this is the breakdown, again, we see the problem in both math and English Language Arts, so that even though the SGP met target, the achievement level did not meet target because their growth did not progress, so I don't know if, Rhonda, that helps with your question in looking at this chart or not? Yes, okay. For the CPI targets, in order to meet the progress and performance index next year, the Decker students, all students, need to increase ELA by approximately two points. need to increase ELA by approximately two points. Uh, both, uh, high-needs and all students. And in math, by three points for all students and three point three, four points for high-needs students.
Question?
Those are the annual increments that are required to meet target.
Three points higher every single year?
Yes.
To me, in 2017?
Yes.
Okay. And every single year that we don't do that, then that three goes up to four or five or...
The slope becomes steeper.
Yep, yes.
Just a point of clarification, if we remember the original NCLB, everyone was to be proficient by two fourteen.
They keep moving the mark.
Yes, ma'am.
How lucky for us. Oh, I did it again, I'm sorry.
Go.
If you stick in these numbers long enough, lots, yes. Minnet Forest, and I, I want to thank Mrs. Siemens for hanging in here with us tonight. Um, Minnet Forest's performance levels, you can see that advanced and proficient continues to be more than fifty percent of the students. The warning is low, uh, and needs improvement is below. But, this is the actual achievement levels. In math, we have a few more in warning, specifically in grade five. Advanced and proficient is not as great as it is in like, English Language Arts. The grade four and grade five struggle more than grade three. And we are dissecting that. In fact, Mrs. Siemens and I were looking at specifically grade five today. Uh, the ELA, student growth percentile, we have, you know, if we were graphing this, we have some strange tails here in the bell curve of student growth percentile. That is ELA, and this is math. Again, these are the actual percentages of students who have earned SGPs at these various levels. The six-year comparison of CPI in English Language Arts, we see a slight drop in twelve in ELA, and again, in mathematics. Now, this is where dissecting the test items, if we had them all, even what we do have, is going to be very important. Because we'll be able to look and see if it's a lack of computation skill or a lack of reading comprehension of the test item that led to the drop. The SGP trends, we have a continuing roller coaster in mathematics and a continuing slight, but leveling off. It was a rise and now a leveling off with a slight drop in ELA. Translating all of that to the Progress and Performance Index. Minnet Forest is a Level Two school because it did not meet the target for Progress and Performance Index of seventy-five for all students or for high-needs. Again, they had met the target under the recalculation in both 2009 and 2011, but not in 2012 and not in the cumulative. That breaks down for all students in a not-so-pretty chart. Their growth in ELA did meet target. That's the only place that the school met target this year. For high-needs students, they did not meet a target of seventy-five. Um, their, the, when, the way they do the indicators and the awarding of points, it looks like a huge drop. But again, if they don't meet target in more than two areas, you're going to get a very low total.
And just to be clear, the, the characterization of not meeting target is based on the cumulative, not the one year, correct?
Yes, correct. Correct. And once again, you see that they met growth in ELA, but not achievement. They did, they declined in math and they showed improvement in math SGP, but not sufficient to make target. That's what the fifty means. The targets for Minnet in 2017, ninety-two point three for all students, eighty-eight point five for high-needs students. What that means in annual increments is that in ELA, Minnet students will have to increase approximately two point three points for high-needs, one point eight four. So, approximately two points a year in ELA. And in mathematics, two point six points for all students, three points for high-needs students. Those are the annual increments. Moving on to the middle school. These are the students' ELA performance levels. Warning, needs improvement, proficient and advanced for ELA, for mathematics. And again, this is with the more rigorous mathematics program and curriculum that was just implemented last year. Their student growth percentile shows very low growth for a majority of the students. And in mathematics, we have a similar picture. CPI results show slight drops in ELA across the board, except in some of our minority populations. And once again, the middle school has a group of English Language learners for the first time. Mathematics, we see a slight increase, but not significant. I will say that that slight increase is more significant than not only because of the rigor that has been introduced. The SGP...
Excuse me, would you go back for us?
Sure.
I actually don't think, although it's only one data point, a five-point, uh, increase in low income in the CPI is, is insignificant.
No, I think it's very significant, absolutely.
I all, yeah, exactly. It's very significant. If it could be maintained, and if you look at the trend, overall trend of low income, and for that matter, the aggregate, but particularly the low income, it's extremely positive.
And the other thing that this, this is one of the points that did give, you know, did give me optimism is because that is an increase, five points is significant no matter what, but it's an increase on an assessment that is assessing them at math standards higher than they have been assessed at before.
Exactly.
So, I, I do think it is significant. And the program that we had purchased for the middle school is University of Chicago math program, which is very rigorous. The teachers had to do, as they call it, an awful lot of backfilling uh, with information and skills that the students did not have. So, the mathematics scores are extremely significant. And I see that Mr. Gilmore is still here with us with the middle school and he could fill you in on the hours of preparation that the teachers put in to the, the new math program and to have the students prepared.
Could you go back one slide, please?
Sure. This is ELA.
I just want to hear that sound, that's really what I wanted to... Okay, okay, thank you.
It must be a leftover from an old program, that's all I can tell you.
Go ahead.
That'll keep us awake if nothing else.
Thank you.
Um, again, here are our growth trends in mathematics. It's very significant for SGP. Translating all of this to the Progress and Performance Index, we see that the school did not meet target of seventy-five in the cumulative. However, in their recalculation of the scores, we had a PPI of a hundred and ten in 2009. So, um, it, it helped in the averaging, but it's, it's really an inconsequential score at this point.
It's only ten percent.
Right, exactly. And here's the breakdown of scores. Uh, and I think here you, you see another, I, another point of the significance of that math. And that is that the CPI, in narrowing the proficiency gaps, the school met target. Uh, for high-needs students, the, we did, middle school did not meet target. We did not meet target, um, for either the annual or the cumulative for 2012. And the breakdown here is even more significant for the mathematics when you talk about, for high-needs students, which is that low-income group that you've alre, already pointed out, Mr. Swett, a hundred points in narrowing proficiency gaps in mathematics. And the fifty would indicate that there was an increase in SGP in mathematics, but didn't make the target. Here are the CPI targets in order to meet the Progress and Performance Index in 2017. Ninety-three point five for all students in mathematics, eighty-eight point seven for high-needs students, I mean, I'm sorry, in English Language Arts. That is one and a half points per year for all students, one point seven four points for high-needs students. For mathematics, CPI will require a two point five increment every year for all students and two point seven six increment annually for high-needs. We have our work cut out for us. Moving right along to the high school. The performance distribution based on achievement and CPI is here for both ELA math and also we've included science for you. Um, we've broken out specifically on this chart to show you grade nine science uh, because I think it does point out something significant for us and for our students. Yes, there's a large group of needs improvement. This is probably a little closer to a bell curve. Uh, for pro, performance distribution, although it's definitely to the right with a lot of proficient and advanced students. No one in grade nine has to take the retest. Well, I'm sorry, the red will have to take a retest. But, that is just over ten percent of the students. And this is the grade where we introduced this introductory to physics through grants. We were able to purchase the physics program with the modules and the hands-on equipment so that students, um, in fact, Dr. Rabinevich and I were visiting a class and they were building a ramp and they were testing velocity and speed and, um, impact of slope on velocity. And it was just marvelous to see the kids not only building that ramp and doing those measurements, but actually using the formulas to do the calculations. So, I think it does say that in this particular instance, having the materials made a difference for those students in science. And ELA continues to be exceptional with no students in warning or failure. Grade ten student growth, um, we have some odd situations there. Our mathematics growth is not good. CPI, ELA is exceptional. Our CPI in 2012 actually exceeds our 2017 target. And that is for all students and high-needs. Uh, the assessments in grade ten did not change. They don't change until twenty four, the high school assessments don't change until 2014 because the state in its inimitable wisdom decided that they, the high school students needed more preparation in order to be ready to take assessments at the new levels. So, their assessments did not change. Mathematics, we see some increases, a very significant increase among our students with disabilities. Uh, and we had some change in some of the subgroups. But again, it's one high-needs group for PPI. The student growth trends on SGP, we do not see significant growth. In fact, we don't see growth at this point at the high school. The high school is a Level Two school. They met target for all students, but not for all high-needs students. And I'll show you where that broke down. For all students, the target is seventy-five and they have a CPI, uh, PPI of seventy-six, the cumulative PPI, having met target. It breaks down this way. They narrowed the proficiency gaps in ELA, met target for growth, even though we didn't see a huge growth increase. And, but they met growth compared to the state. Their math, CPI, they narrowed the proficiency gaps and met target, but not SGP or growth. They, rather, they declined. The science, you see, was extremely above target, a hundred points. And they earned extra credit in both increasing the cohort graduation rate and in de, decreasing the dropout rate.
Just to be clear, they got twenty-five points for no change?
No, it's for no change on the other indicators. For the annual dropout rate...
No, I wasn't talking about, I was talking about science.
Oh, for science. They got, yeah, they've got twenty-five points for extra credit.
Be, because...
They decreased the number, the percentage of students in warning and failure more than ten percent, but not more than fifteen percent. The extra credit is a different measurement all by itself. I can...
All right, go ahead.
Pull up the actual...
Okay.
But I'd be happy to do it for you later. Extra credit doesn't follow the same rules as the other indicators.
Okay, okay.
Okay. The annual dropout rate was twenty-five points for no change. The cohort graduation rate, they met target of seventy-five for increasing the cohort graduation rate. Those two numbers, the twenty-five and seventy-five at the bottom, indicators six and seven, do follow the same rules. And this is why the high school is a Level Two school. They did not meet the target of seventy-five for high-needs students. Their cumulative PPI is seventy-four. So, if you go back to my analogy of the dartboard, they missed the second ring by a hair.
But, the problem is, the eighty-five and ninety-three are going to gradually fall off, one year and then two years. So, they'll have, they have a problem that they're dealing with.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yes.
So, so out of this whole report for the, for the Wareham High School, they missed Level One by one point?
Yes, sir.
On the whole report?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
That's why I don't play darts. Did you have a question, Rhonda?
No, but just following up, yes, this year by one point. But once that eighty-five drops off, it's going to be a lot harder for them to meet Level One next year.
I understand, but it's...
But, the eighty-five is only counting ten percent and the ninety-three will only count ten percent. So, if they have a good score, it's still going to meet, next year is still going to be much more meaningful because they're, the eighty-five is almost worthless to the calculation this year. Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. It, it's, it's a complex system.
Yeah, well, it's not so much complex, it's arbitrary, but go ahead.
It sure is, throw the dart.
It is definitely arbitrary, but I was going to let you say that.
Throw the dart.
All right, uh, there's the, it, yeah, it's, it's only complex by the tedium of details.
Could you go back one slide?
Sure.
I'm going to break my rule since I'm chair. I just, I think it's really important to understand that the annual PPI should, should be taken with multiple grains of salt.
Absolutely.
Because you can literally be off one tenth of a point and cause that to be a decline.
Right.
And you get zero points for that category.
Correct. Correct.
So it, it can create, as we saw in Minnetonka, for example, enormous volatility from year to year.
Yes.
So to me, the only PPI that's worth looking at is the cumulative.
I, that's what bothers me more than anything about this system, is it's the sheer absolute awarding of these points in such an arbitrary manner. So that, yes, if, if the CPI is ninety-two point one, the target, and we get ninety-two, we would not get seventy-five, we'd get fifty, which immediately impacts the average.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Uh, just, I just raised my hand. This discussion on the, on the new, on the new way. Do you consider, I mean, you can split hairs and go back and forth on how arbitrary it is, but do you consider this new method an improvement or not over, over the AYP?
Can we save that for the end? It's a great question, but it's an overall question.
And I want to ask you the same question, too, so that you know how you really delve into it.
Okay, that's a great question, we should come back to it when you're finished.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Jen.
For the high school targets, again, as I mentioned earlier, for English language arts, they have already exceeded the two thousand and seventeen targets and, which makes that one-point differential all the more upsetting, but, um, so they have exceeded the targets in ELA already for two thousand and seventeen by their scores this year. For mathematics, they need to increase one point seven six points annually for all students and one point six six annually for high need students in order to make the math scores of two thousand and seventeen. I think, and this is what I said to the teachers, we have to focus forward. Yes, we need to analyze all of the results, we need to look at proficiency gaps and student growth percentiles, but we need to look at them by drilling down and identify students' learning needs and then comparing the results of MCAS to other assessments that we give at the elementary levels, we have DIBELS, we have GRADE, we have GMAID, all assessment as well as our district benchmarks. At the middle school and high school, we have district benchmark assessments. So we need to look at a multiple group of assessments and look at what our students are doing well and where they need additional instruction and additional support. That analysis is in process. Yes, we need to compare our schools to district and state, but we also need to move forward with those results in looking at curriculum and instruction and where we need to target. Excuse me.
Is this an opportune time to ask the chair for, you need a motion to go beyond ten?
You read my mind. I'll, I'll take a motion, hopefully to not go too far beyond ten.
So moved.
Can I have a second, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, staying, five zero zero, thank you.
Thank you. As I said, the analysis has already begun among our teachers and administrators. One of the goals to come out of Monday was to begin to identify priority standards where we need to focus our instruction, and I was reading that earlier. That work has begun. We are looking at goals and gaps that need our attention, that will be shared both with students and families as I go to various PTA meetings and open houses that are yet to be held. We are also busy looking at what we have and what we need as we go into this budget process, as far as materials, as far as reading texts, and specifically as far as math texts at the high school. We also need to identify specific training needs. This is a shift for many of our, for all of our teachers, and they are going to need additional support and training in various instructional strategies as they raise their expectations and their rigor for our students. So it is a focus forward, it is looking at students' needs. As I said to them on Monday, we have to remember that our mission is to educate all students for life's challenges, responsibilities, and opportunities, and that means keeping our eyes on the goals through collaborative and reflective efforts that begin and end with the students' learning needs. Slide seventy-six.
Thank you, Jen. Comments and questions are open and welcome. Mike?
Can I re-ask my question?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Is this the new way an improvement over the AYP method?
I don't think it's a yes or no, and I'm not trying to skirt the question on you, but I think there are aspects of it that are an improvement. The, the fact that we don't have the same student being counted multiple times just because he or she happens to be low income and minority and maybe, um, English language learner or special needs. So that's an improvement. I think bringing together the calculation of both achievement level and growth percentile is important because I think you have to look at both. What I don't like about this system is the arbitrary assignment of points. To me, it is, it's, I mean, it defines the word arbitrary. I mean, it's like the rings on a dartboard. You either hit the ring or you don't, and that, that doesn't sit well with me when you're talking about student achievement. But some would argue, and I, you know, I do speak out, so I was in a meeting with two representatives from the Department of Education and shared this, and the one who happens to be a great reading specialist that's done a lot of work with us completely agreed. She says, but you know that even in the arbitrariness of these assignment of points, there's so many indicators that it can be diluted. I don't know, I think the jury's out on that one. Because we saw at the high school, you know, one point.
So, I mean, you, the arbitrariness of the thresholds, I guess?
Yes.
Yeah, not necessarily the criteria.
Well, not necessarily the criteria, no. I think the indicators, if we look back at those multiple charts, the indicators are all important indicators. But to have an absolute of seventy-five points if you meet target and fifty points if you improve but don't meet target, but nothing in between, makes a hu, has a huge effect.
You, you wish...
When you're looking at an annual PPI.
You, you wish it was more granular?
Yes.
Right.
But I don't think I want any more slots.
And I, I wanted to ask the same question of the chair, 'cause I know, I mean, I, I listen to him as much as I do to you when, when we discuss this, so what's your, what's your thoughts on that?
I, I tend to agree with pretty much everything that Jen said. I think a little more, more effort could, could have been put into it so that it would have significantly reduced the volatility. And the more volatility there are in the results, the less credibility they will have. And I think credibility is key for any system that's impacting so many children and parents and, and districts and schools. I don't, I, I really think it's, it's totally inappropriate to see a school, a whole school in one subject area, excuse me, in a PPI go from ninety to thirty-five, for example. I mean, that's just, to suggest that a school has declined that much from one year to the next, doesn't make any sense, it's not rational, and yet that's the conclusion we're supposed to draw. So while I agree that the criteria make a lot of sense, I think the way they've used the criteria could be significantly improved.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question to those comments. But if, if this was back to AYP, would we still be declining as a district? And I know that you might not know that, but...
Right.
Because if that's the case, then that's, that's what we need to focus on, not the, the, you know, the assessment tool or that, but the, that the declining, no matter what, what way they're asking us to assess.
We would not be declining, we'd be flatlining if we were AYP. So that's not great, and that still needs a lot of work. And I don't want to sugarcoat that in any way, shape, or form. If we look at the district results and the performance levels, we still have a lot of students in that yellow and red, both ELA and mathematics, that need to improve. And that's, even though this is just a snapshot and this is an overview, big picture of our achievement levels, whether it's AYP or PPI, this means we have to target the needs of our students and the needs of our programs to meet those needs of our students, absolutely.
Just another statement.
Yes.
And I heard you at the end of the presentation, and it's, it's the same, we, this was the same thing last year and the year before, that, that we, we need to dig into the test, we need to see the actual data and where our students are struggling. The only concern that I have with that is that that's exactly what we're doing year after year. Are we just, are we making decisions on a moving target because it's a different class every single year? And if that's the case, I don't think that you ever win because you're addressing a one-year problem instead of looking at the overall, what, what could be just the overall issue.
No, we're doing both because that's what the priority standards are all about. It's looking, it's looking at both the students in that particular year with that particular test, but then looking across the district is what, what are the enduring and overarching standards that our students need to have continued work? And then looking at our curriculum and is it hitting these needs with our students? And if it's not meeting the needs of all students, then where do we need to adjust it? So, yes, it is looking at the individual, but when it comes to making those decisions, it has to look across the years and at the trends. You're absolutely right, otherwise you're just treading water. So it is an annual...
You're trying to hit a moving target because every single year is gonna be different of why an individual student is actually having, is struggling learning. It's more about...
That's why we can't, you can look at an individual student for that particular class, but when you talk about changing programs, changing instructional strategies, you have to look at the bigger picture across grade levels. Yes, you have to analyze it every year, but you have to look across the years in order to formulate conclusions and make those adjustments.
Ken, Cliff?
Yeah, what's up? I've got a couple of comments, a couple of issues that I'd like to bring up at this particular time, I know it's getting late, but I guess I've gotta put in my two cents.
That's okay.
I'll tell you what I'm really concerned about. I'm concerned about, several years ago, we put in an initiative in grades, was grades three and four or four and five, on specialization.
The teaming went into four and five.
I'm really disappointed that we haven't seen any marked results in terms of, you know, having the teachers specialize in a particular curriculum area, math or English or language arts. I, I thought that by doing that, that they would, that we'd see some marked improvement in, in mathematics. So this whole specialization thing, I, I would, I'm, I'm just concerned about it not reaping the kind of benefits that I, I thought would come from it. Do you have a comment on that?
I think we saw improvement the first two years, we saw a decline this year. So I don't want to have a knee-jerk reaction to a one-year decline. I want to look at students and instruction. I do think, no excuses intended whatsoever, I do think that our teachers and our students are faced with a level of rigor and expectation that they have not had. And it's, um, it doesn't matter who the students are, and I said this to one of our groups of teachers Monday, and it happened to be a group of grade four teachers, that I, I understand that the student population may be different than it was ten years ago, the needs may be different, but hello, there are districts all over the state faced with these same dilemmas.
Same dilemmas.
And there are districts that have been facing these dilemmas for a lot of years, that it's not new to them. So I don't think that's an excuse, I think it just means that our level of instructional expectations has to increase. And we have to provide that level of differentiation, those multiple strategies for learning, and it's, it is providing interventions, but it is also providing good differentiation in that initial classroom instruction.
Well, I, I know we've got some initiatives going, we've got, you know, response intervention, we got, we got a lot of, you know, new, new curriculum, new math curriculum, we got a lot of things going on. But I do believe, from my own professional experience, that this particular test, other than probably the high school, I, there is definitely a reliability problem here in terms of changing this thing midstream, especially at the elementary level. So, be, that being said, that I think that there, you know, definitely, I would question the reliability of these results, but, and I think that's what you're saying, your knee-jerk reaction is, you know, you got, you know...
It's one year.
You gotta, you gotta sort of wait and see, but the bottom line is, we're showing minimal growth.
Absolutely.
And that bothers me.
And I, I, I completely concur. And my initial reactions are neither audible nor printable when I first started going through this because I, I am extremely disappointed and I would be lying to say anything else. And I do think that, as Rhonda has pointed out, we have to be careful that we're not looking just at one year, but we have to look at the overall trend. And I do think the trend tells us that we need to increase our expectations.
But our trend has been consistent in terms of growth.
Yes, it has.
I, I, and again, not to get into specifics for the schools, I think that, you know, there was obviously, everyone seems to be, you know, those Minnetonka numbers just jumped and hit us in the head when we saw them. But you explained away some of it, but I don't know if you've explained away all of it, but that, we'll wait, that'll...
We're still, no, I have not.
This, this is where I think we need to go here. And, and I don't know quite how to state this, but I think that we've reached a point now where we've got to be honest and candid.
Yes.
Us, we up front here as the policymakers and you folks as the administrators, going down to district administration, school administration, and ultimately the teachers, that we, we need to, we need to really put a report together. And not, not, not anything from the state, something from our own observations, our own heart, our own education base, our own feelings, our own intuition about what does this data really mean? What does it really mean? In, in terms of student achievement. And notice I'm not saying student performance, I'm saying student achievement.
Yes.
Because I see these as two very different things. So what does it really mean? What conclusions can we draw from this data? You know, as a district, as a, or by school? What conclusions in terms of what, what we're doing or not doing? What, what conclusions do we, can we see as to what the real problems are? All right, are the real problems socioeconomic, are the real problems educational, are the real problems goal-setting, are the real problems curriculum? You know, I'm not, I'm not sure I even have a handle on it at this point in time. And what, what's, you know, again, once we define the problem, then we can start looking at these strategies, strategies realistically. Because right now, from where I sit, and I don't mean to be critical, please do not take this as a criticism. We're, we're just, we're just throwing things up in the air and hoping that we can see some results because right now, over the years that I've been on the school committee, our results have been pretty much the same, we're flatlined, we're not really showing a whole lot of growth, other than maybe the high school.
Well, there, there are spots where we have shown growth, but consistent improvement...
That's my point, okay? So, I, I think we have to put this maybe down on papers as a, as a, a statement of position. But here's, here's the thing that I, I'm really concerned about, and I know that it's about funding, and I, I will be the first one to tell you that there is a, there is a definite correlation between funding and student performance. But, that being said, I think there is a missing link here that really hardly ever gets talked about, and I think we've got to start talking about, at least having a, having a, a little, maybe some study on it, or maybe even looking at it from a different perspective, is I think we really start, we've got to start looking at homeschool connections and homeschool relationships. Because I think that that's the one, you know, we have been focusing all of our initiatives in school, whether it be instruction, skillful teacher, curriculum design...
Which is our area...
New implementations, exactly.
It's our area of control.
But, that's exactly right. But we really need to focus somehow, somewhere... But we really need to focus somehow, some way in connecting with the homes. And I know that this is pie in the sky, given the fiscal restraints that we have. But I think that if I were to point to one of the constructs that might be affecting this, I would have to say that there may be some factors that a good, strong homeschool connection could solve. But I really do think we need that report. I think we need to have an honest report as to what does this mean? How does it implement, how does it affect us as a system? What can each of us in our specific roles do to try to improve the situation? But I just think that we have to start looking at this thing more holistically. And as to, both at the district level and at the school level. But, I'm a little disheartened, but I'm not ready to throw in the towel. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ken, you all set?
Mike? So, when you, when you got these results, you couldn't, you know, you were obviously surprised. You didn't expect this.
I was dismayed.
Dismade. Now, we do a ton of testing throughout the year. Did any of our testing match what you're seeing here?
No.
Because I mean, I'm told when these tests are done, you know, the GMA, the DIBELS, et cetera, it's all third-party proctored, it's independent, you know, and then we get this good raw data. But you're saying it didn't match at all what we got from the MCAS scores?
No, and you're looking at very, very different assessments. When I've compared the DIBELS scores, which are reading fluency scores across the district, we see growth from year to, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year in every one of our schools at every grade level, in varying degrees. That's one assessment. I look at grade and GMA, I looked at them across both schools and within both schools. They are a norm reference test, and it is a national norm. So, the norms are set by students across all fifty states. So, we saw growth. It gives us an indicator, because we both pre and post-test in grade and GMA. So, it gives us indicators of growth, and it gives us indicators of where students have specific needs. It does not compare to MCAS at all, because the norms on the grade and the GMA do not match the criterion of MCAS. So, they're for different purposes.
Is there an assessment out there that sort of aligns more so with MCAS so we could have an idea? And we're not blindsided with this?
No, there is not.
I mean, someone could make an awful lot of money if they came up with such an assessment.
There are a lot of companies out there that are creating just those kinds of assessments and charging tens of thousands of dollars to implement them.
Now, now that you have the data, it's probably not in inform yet, is it?
The MCAS is not in inform yet. The DIBELS, the grade, and the GMA from last year are all in inform, and it's being used already this year for our students. MCAS is not in inform yet, because there's, there are some technical issues. One of them I solved today in finding a specific program for our tech coordinator to translate the new frameworks, because you have to enter the frameworks and cutoff scores, and I don't want to get into all the technical details.
MCAS isn't in it all, or just this year?
Just this year.
Just this year.
Just this year.
Remember, we have new frameworks, so.
I hope that's going to be helpful. I really do. The co-op school noticeably absent, they take MCAS, right?
All of our students take MCAS, the Cooperative School and West Wareham Academy all take MCAS. But remember at the very beginning of my presentation, in order for a school or a group of students to be reported on, they have to have a minimum of twenty students at a specific grade level taking the assessment, or thirty students in a subgroup. Neither the Cooperative nor West Wareham Academy reach those thresholds.
Okay, thank you. I'll just, I'll just end. I mean, my fear is that, I mean, it's only going to get worse. I mean, considering the budget, you know, we're below level funded, we've lost so many teachers. I mean, last time we discussed it, I called it a crippling blow. I mean, I mean, yeah, with some saving grace of dropping the old bad test scores, but I, I wish I could be more optimistic, but I'm not. And it's not, it's not your fault, but it is your problem, you know?
I think we have to, and this is what I said to the teachers on Monday. I don't think we can get lost in these numbers. These are numbers that are potentially volatile, as Mr. Swett has pointed out, just because of some of the arbitrary figures. The indicators are important, and I think we have to take those indicators. And I like what Dr. Sylvia says, we have to assess what we're doing and what we need to do. And I think my intuition and my experience in a number of states, including teaching in the deep south and in inner-city school, is that when it comes right down to it, it's roll up your sleeves and it's teacher and classroom and instruction. And it doesn't mean it's all on the teacher. We have to work together and work collaboratively to identify our students' needs. And identifying those needs, only one piece of it is MCAS, and then it is providing the learning opportunities. And that's, that's what it comes down to.
Yes.
I just have two more things. When will we see the state data and how we compare it at a state level?
It was released this afternoon. So, I mean, you could go on the website tonight and look at it. If you want me to come back with another report, I can do that. I mean, I obviously did get it in here.
Right, for each one of the schools, at least one of the last charts, which is the bar graph chart. And I know that we've had it and we've showed it during budget discussions, things like that. Even if it's something in our packet for next school committee meeting, I don't know so much if we want a presentation, but being able to see how the state did on average, that would be useful. And the only other, I mean, I'll, I'll end my piece to just say, I want us to be shocked. Meaning that I sat at this table and we may, we had conversations and had presentations and talked about the new math curriculum, the things that we were doing, and that I remember hearing, I expect double-digit growth numbers. And for us to be flatlined or go down is shocking. I think somebody said, just throw it up in the air and see, you know, what we do. I mean, it's, it feels like at this point, with just flatlining and all the different things that have been implemented, that at least measurable growth should have been across the district because of all the different things that have been put in place. And since that's not there, it's, it's not like, alright, let's dig in there, let's try to find out, and then let's make tweaks. It's kind of like kaboom, like something has to happen. And I know that I'm not in your chair right now. I'm not in the superintendent's chair right now. But if I worked at an organization where, and I had investors and board of directors, and it went this, and then all of a sudden, it started to decline, or that I saw the bar charts that I, charts that I did, it, I guess I'm just, I'm, I am looking for that term, I am shocked by everything that we've implemented, what we really expected this year, and it didn't come through.
I don't think I could be any stronger than to say I'm dismayed.
Okay, we just used different adjectives.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, to see one year's growth of math and not see it sustained the second year in our elementary schools, absolutely concerning. The ELA-
That could be testing too.
Is concerning, pardon?
That could be test itself.
It, that is the other piece of unreliability. And that's why I think seeing the state results is going to be important to see what else is happening.
Because everybody's in the same boat.
We'll see.
And that's what we've got to see. Do I think that there needs to be an element of shock that will lead to action? Absolutely.
I'll keep my comments brief.
We all took your time.
It's okay.
Could you go to chart thirteen, please?
Slide thirteen?
Slide thirteen, thank you. That is my biggest concern. The, it's true that we've, that we're not making progress. But anybody looking at that chart would have to say, and we're not likely to make progress. And that's the chart, to use your term, that caused me so much dismay. So, until we turn that chart around and start growing at least at an acceptable rate, and perhaps at a higher-than-acceptable rate, we have no reason to believe that we're ever going to have CPI or absolute achievement results that are acceptable. And yet despite that, there are little gems in these data. And I'm not going to point out the negatives, because that's frankly not much fun at all. But when I see the middle school, there used to be a twenty-six-point CPI difference-
Yes.
Between the ELA and math results just seven years ago. That difference has been cut in half.
Yes.
And the same kind of impact has been felt on low-income students, and we know how many they are, and we know the reputation that they have for being unprepared for, to be educated. And somehow, we cut it in half.
We have definitely hit some of the gaps and reduced them.
I look at those numbers over such a prolonged period of time, and I say, that doesn't deserve the Level III designation, because it clearly has found a way to improve over the long run. There's barely a blip.
That's right.
And I'm not just saying it because Mr. Gilmour is sitting here. It's just obvious that something has changed in the middle school. And yes, you could argue, well, it's just MCAS, you know, it's just a point in time. But when you have a large enough cohort, over a long enough period of time, it's meaningful.
Absolutely.
What's going on in the English department at the high school is nothing short of fabulous. No matter how you look at it, it's just fabulous. And what I'm, what I would love to see is both learning from the great things that are happening in some locations, and accountability for the not-so-good things or bad things that are happening in other locations. And it seems to me both are missing. And unless anybody else has something to say, we can move on to gifts. Okay, gifts.
Thank you, Mrs. Rotella.
Thank you very much, Jan.
You're welcome.
I would like to move to accept a gift through the efforts of Mr. Craig Reed, manager of the Dollar Tree store in East Wareham. The Minet Forest School participated in the store's Apple a Day program from August thirteenth to September eighth. I will recommend acceptance of school supply products valued at approximately $2,660 to the Minet Forest Elementary for the stores fundraiser activity. And three hundred and sixty-one five-dollar school supply packets were purchased by customers, and the store is donating additional products. In case somebody asks, they would only do it for one school, the school closest to where they are located. And it was in East Wareham, and that's why it's Minet Forest, because I have been asked why not Dicas, so.
Move approval. Do I have a second? I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all.
Anybody have any other business they'd like to bring before the committee?
Oh, can I ask, tomorrow when we're discussing the agenda, that the association has asked to move a level, a grievance to Level III? And whether we would be willing to meet early to deal with that, like six-thirty?
Probably, yeah.
I just don't know if you wanted to get a feel for the group.
But it wouldn't be until two weeks from tonight?
Yes, the next meeting.
Okay, I think most, most people would actually prefer six-thirty, although Cliff, is that still problematic occasionally for you?
Yeah, it is. What's the date on it?
October third. Third, I keep saying second, but it's the third.
Yeah, that would be a problem for me, but I'll get here as soon as I can.
I understand. Anybody else, we retire people, you know?
It's not an issue, Mr. Chair.
That's the first time you've said that. Unbelievable. I guess he's going to be signing the bills.
Okay, tentatively, yeah, it looks like it won't be a problem, and hopefully Cliff can join us as soon as possible. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No moves.
I don't want to. I want to stay here.
You sound terrific.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.